How you doing?
Hi, Sammy Alshati.
Yeah, we try to impress you guys a little bit.
Yeah, I called you the first time at like five to ask you if I should and then I listened to the voicemail and was like, uh, wearing a suit. The second you said, "I'm wearing a suit," I was like, "Okay." Because I was like, "Okay."
It's good, Joe.
No, it's good, but I mean, I just remembered, I was like, "Okay."
Okay, well, let's check that question. I'm gonna hit the control-ready button. I'm gonna try to hit the-- is that on? I can't tell. Oh, boy, I'm sorry. That's the one I need to hit. All right, our board is reconvened from closed session. We'll reconvene open session and I'll ask our clerk of the board, trustee Tom Fuentes, to report any actions taken in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one item to report. On a seven-to-zero vote, the board approved a leave without pay until July 31st, 2008, for a classified employee.
Thank you. And trustee Fuentes will also lead us in the invocation tonight, followed by trustee Wagner with the Pledge of Allegiance. So please stand.
Let us pray. Almighty and eternal God, we thank you for this time to gather in freedom. We ask you to guide this board and its decisions. We thank you for our community and for our nation. In this week, when we recall the sacrifices of our nation's veterans, help us to remember them, to thank them, and to honor them always. We ask you for your special blessings upon our community college district, for all those who study here, and for all those who work here. As it is written on the currency of our land, "In God we trust," tonight we place our trust in you. As it is written on the coin of our land, "Liberty," let our actions here tonight advance the cause of liberty. As it is written, "From many, one," keep us a people united and make us a people devoted to serve our neighbors and to always do your will. Amen.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, we will move to public comments, and we do have several people that wish to address the board tonight. We'll start with Matthew Contorelli. And Matthew will be followed by Brenda Born, who I understand has ceded her time to Bob Cosgrove. So is Matthew Contorelli here?
I'm here, but I was hoping to address the board during the--
Oh, okay. Very good. You want to hold your comments until we get to that specific item? In that case, I will call on Bob Cosgrove. Professor Cosgrove.
Thank you, trustee Lang. I'm Bob Cosgrove, a member of the Saddleback faculty and last year's academic senate president and this year's past president. The 50% rule for faculty is not a new rule. It's been around a long time. And I'm not addressing my remarks to simply the formula that the college and all college districts are required to observe. I want to talk about things that happened last year that might have anticipated the problems we're having this year. Ignorance occurs when sound advice and supported explanations are presented and then ignored. We ignore evidence and sound advice at our peril. Last year in meetings with the chancellor, I, serving as senate president at Saddleback College, urged the hiring of full-time faculty offset the shrinking full-time numbers. From what I observed on these occasions, I was not convincing to the chancellor, but the evidence I presented was there. And you are now facing the consequences of our CEOs ignoring the evidence and our repeated recommendations. These observations and recommendations, by the way, were made in the presence of others. If the board will recall, I made a similar remarks to you and, on one occasion, used the litmus test of the mailboxes, increasing numbers of part-time mailboxes, decreasing numbers of full-time mailboxes. Our full-time faculty at Saddleback is about 214. 214 mailboxes. Our part-time faculty this semester is, of tally this morning from the various divisions, 539 part-timers at Saddleback without the information from ATEP and without the fine arts number. So my guess is that it's in excess of 600 at Saddleback alone. 600-plus mailboxes. We will strain the resources of Saddleback faculty by hiring the number of new faculty I have heard of, 30. And these are faculty desperately needed. The number of hours designing job descriptions, reading applications, crafting questions, interviewing candidates, completing reference checks is daunting. And that is times 30 and just at Saddleback. Faculty and staff will do this. It's critical for our students. Despite the fact that this massive number of faculty and more is desperately needed, time spent on a single massive hiring predicated on a quick fix rather than a thoughtful plan will take away time from work that must be done in other areas. Curriculum, program review, part-time evaluations, state mandated matriculation requirements in math, English, reading, SLO and OULs, institutional effectiveness, work on programs for ATEP, distance education, and possible requests from accreditation commission if they have other questions about us after they review us this year. Add to this the work required by dozens of other committees under the auspices of the Faculty Association and the Academic Senate, and you will see that our workload becomes daunting. The hasty implementation of a policy that values short-term monetary concerns rather than long-term institutional planning reflects badly on all of us, including those of us, faculty, administration alike, who have for years argued for the timely replacement of full-time faculty. Furthermore, think of the pressure that will be placed on our excellent human resources staff. I've seen the stress on them in the past when we have gone out for only 15 faculty members. And of course, administrative and classified hires are ongoing. The people most burdened, the faculty and the human resources staff, are the entities least responsible for this large-scale hiring. And those most responsible? I hear and read about the boards Merrill Lynch, Citicorp, Hershey Corporation, and other large corporations placing responsibilities for billions of dollars in losses and poor planning on their CEOs. Why, in public education, do we not do the same? With the perks come the responsibilities. Who's responsible for our failure to meet the demands of the 50% law? Thank you.
Thank you, Professor Cosgrove. That concludes public comments, and we will move to board reports, and we'll start with trustee Jay.
Thank you. I have three things to mention. The first was the fine arts dedication of the theater at IVC. I think after an 18-year wait, I believe it was longer than that, but that at least is what got in the headlines, after an 18-year wait, it finally opened two weeks ago tonight with a marvelous performance, both instrumentally and with the choral groups from IVC, and they did a great job. And Glenn, I think that all of your staff, as well as yourself, deserve large plaudits for the program that you put on two weeks ago. Thank you. Secondly, I'm really pleased to see that there was a request by the chancellor, I believe, to put security in the 50% compliance law to move them up on the agenda. Isn't that correct? Didn't you send us a letter to that effect?
Just repeat the question again.
Yeah. I believe I saw a letter that said that we were going to move up on the agenda tonight, security and the 50% compliance law.
Yes, we will be talking about both of those.
And I think that's great, because those are the two most important issues tonight and for the future. And I think particularly, wonderful sheet here on the 50% compliance law. Obviously, we'll discuss it when that item comes up, but I would sure like to see all of those items connected to dollar figures and see that they add up to the 4.7 million that supposedly were out of compliance, according to the DRAC figures, to get up to the 50% compliance. So I think that's probably being done somewhere, but I would sure like to see that. I don't think we need a big formal report, but just that somebody's keeping track of what each one of the items that are recommended total, so that we get up to that 4.7 million total. So we beat the 50% compliance law this year. Thanks.
Thank you, trustee Jay. Trustee Padberg.
Yes, this past Saturday, I attended a very outstanding, both Veterans Day and 232nd Marine Birthday celebration at Costa del Sol with 10 active-duty Marines and our Assistant Sheriff, Jack Anderson. I also attended the Saddleback Homecoming and the OCTA Fifth District Leadership Breakfast and the board evaluation, self-evaluation. I also attended the opening of the Fine Arts Theater at IVC and congratulations, President Rockmore. On the 28th, I will attend the OCTA Stakeholders Working Group on behalf of this body, and that will be the last meeting of the year. And then on December 4th, I will address the San Clemente City Council on behalf of our Veterans Memorial at Saddleback College. That concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Padberg. Trustee Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to bring a report to the board from our Legislative Task Force. This year's annual meeting in a breakfast forum was well-attended. It was hosted by our colleagues at the Rancho Santiago Community College District this year. Participating were California State Senator Dick Ackerman and members of the California Legislature from the Assembly, the Honorable Mamie Walters, the Honorable Chuck DeVore, the Honorable Jim Silva, and the Honorable Jose Solario. Senator Ackerman was recognized by the Orange County Community College Districts for his support of community colleges during his tenure in the legislature. Each legislator spoke briefly about legislation. They have advanced or issues that they were involved in during the past year, with several addressing task force priority areas such as job training, student transfer options, reduced textbook costs, and reduced cost for capital improvement projects. I appreciate the opportunity to serve on behalf of this board at the task force. I too would like to commend the community at Irvine Valley College. It was a joy to participate in both the Performing Arts Theater Building opening and the recent Veterans Day ceremonies. And I wish to commend all those involved for the beautiful, spiritual, and patriotic tone of both of those occasions. The selections of music were outstanding. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, trustee Fuentes. Trustee Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Briefly, my colleagues have mentioned a couple of events out in the community that they've had an opportunity to attend. Obviously, the Performing Arts Center dedication at IVC was a wonderful event, but all of them up here have been talking about what they've done out in the community. And I want to highlight that and use that as a jumping-off point for my remarks. The two events that I attended in the community since last we got together that I want to mention were public recognitions of two of my colleagues and their fine service to Orange County in the course of a lifetime, in both cases, of activism. Both trustee Fuentes was recognized and trustee Lang and his wife Julia were recognized separately by our friends and neighbors in Orange County for their fine service. And it was truly a pleasure to attend and to participate in those events and the recognition for what these two fine public servants do for all of us that are constituents of theirs in the South Orange County Community College District and that are friends and neighbors of theirs in Orange County. So a salute to trustee Fuentes and a salute to trustee Lang for some outstanding community service that I was privileged to participate in and hear about and attend.
Thank you, trustee Wagner, and I know trustee Fuentes also thanks you for your remarks. Since most of the other activities, I think, have been covered by my fellow board members, I really don't have anything in addition to add to that, so I'll defer my comments tonight and recognize trustee Milchiker.
Yeah, thank you, President Lang. When we return from a conference, it's a custom that our board members report on the conference that we attended. And I attended the e-learning conference in Quebec. Alan Greenspan said in his recent book that the most important thing that we can do is to teach math to our students. And math ability is the most important asset that we could have for our future students of our global economy. And there were many, many incredible ways that they instructed people how to teach math in a better way. I learned, there were people from all over the world at the conference, and I learned of the many different ways there are of teaching students and educating students using e-learning. I was glad I was able to represent the conference. When I looked into the conference, I thought that the cost of the hotel was a little too steep for me concerning the budget of our district, so I was pleased to get a great deal at the Best Western Way Down the Hill from the conference. And so I want the taxpayers to know that their money was well-spent. They produce a number of journals, e-learning journals, and I just want to know that you to know that I brought back three packets, one for district IT and one for each one of our colleges' IT, with a booklet, a e-learning journal from each of the, for each of the district entities and the college entities, the three CDs, and all the other goodies. So I'll distribute it to all the entities. I also want to mention that I attended the Irvine Valley College Performing Arts Center dedication, and it was incredible. I have to commend the choir director and professor Stephen Roachford, who commissioned three incredibly wonderful new works of art just for the dedication of these buildings. And they had their inaugural presentation that evening. And I really wish that that evening had been taped and we could show it on TV instead of this board meeting. I think that would be so much more interesting. And I also want to say that I attended the Orange County Community College Legislative Task Force, and it was an incredible number of our local legislators were in attendance. And I was, the current members are doing a fabulous job in working with our local legislators. I was one of the founders of that task force many years ago, and I'm so pleased that it has such success and people are working so hard to get the ear of our local legislators and tell them our community college stories. And they are believers also, so that was a really nice breakfast meeting.
Thank you, trustee Milchiker. Trustee Williams.
Yes, good evening. It was a busy month for me. Some of the trustees have covered the events. I also attended the Orange County Legislative Task Force. It was a great panel discussion. It's kind of a universal message now in the community colleges, the state budget, the county budget. We're okay this year, but '08, '09's gonna be a tough year. The state is projecting right now an $8 billion shortfall over this year's budget, so it paints kind of a gloomy picture, but at least we have a heads-up and we can deal with it. I attended a wonderful event honoring Board President Dave Lang and his wife Julia, and congratulations for all that you do. And I attended the Performing Arts Center at Irvine Valley College grand opening and dedication. And I believe President Rockmore, the website will have upcoming events to be held in the Performing Arts Theater, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so for those of you in the viewing audience in the city of Irvine, you have a state-of-the-art theater complex to attend events, musicals. I understand there's some holiday things planned. And finally, the campus safety issue is up before us once again. You'll see later in the meeting that we're talking about security cameras. When I first was elected to the board, a priority was campus lighting, and we've come a long way since then. We're talking about shootings on campus unfortunately on a regular basis. It's now reached the Community College League magazine. There's an article, a wonderful article, on what colleges around the state are doing. Campus safety is a top priority, and it's gone beyond just security cameras. Now we're talking about systems, counseling students. This is a very real problem, and I don't think it's going to end soon. Unfortunately, it's a problem that's becoming more and more pervasive. So you'll hear more about that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Williams. And student trustee Renaud.
Good evening. I also attended the IVC Performing Arts Center grand opening. And to echo the other colleagues, I'm looking forward to watching these talented students perform and shine at this amazing structure. I also attended the board evaluation. And finally, observed the IVC Halloween Fashion Show. And it was very amusing to see students in such Halloween spirit. And finally, I want to wish the students and staff a early happy holidays, because I know some of you have been working tirelessly on the budget, and I wish you all the best on your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll turn to the chancellor's report. Chancellor Mather.
Thank you, President Lang. We received a wonderful annual report of the Writing Center from Saddleback College. It was a very informative report. My commendations to faculty and staff who work in their center. At Saddleback College, BGS Building renovation effort has been underway for some time, and it's expected to be completed sometime in spring of '08. So we hope to do that building's dedication at the appropriate time. A lot of trustees have mentioned about IVC Performing Arts Center dedication, which was a nice event. Let me mention that we recently also had the ATEP dedication last October 19th. And at IVC, Business and Technology Building is currently under construction, right next to the theater, and will be holding a dedication for that building probably sometime in summer of '08. The Veterans Day commemoration at IVC was a wonderful event, and for me, it was particularly wonderful because it was organized by faculty, administrators, managers, and students of the college. And that's a good thing. In terms of the Veterans Memorial, that has been mentioned, both colleges are planning to erect a Veterans Memorial, and that is also a wonderful, patriotic thing to do. With that, I wish all the faculty and staff and students and the community members Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor Mather. With that, I'll turn to my colleagues and see if there are any board requests for reports. Trustee Padberg.
Yes, I will be bringing a request back on the December meeting, so I appreciate having the paper that needs to be completed so that can be ready for the December meeting.
Okay, very good. Very good. We'll provide that to you. Any other trustees? In that case, let us turn to the consent calendar. We will approve the consent calendar, but then before we deal with any items removed from the consent calendar, we will be advancing certain items to the front of this meeting and recognize certain members of our audience that will be making presentations. So are there items on the consent calendar that trustees wish to remove? I'll recognize trustee Padberg.
I have three items to remove: 4.4, 4.7, and 4.9.
Can you please repeat those?
4.4, 4.7, and 4.9.
Thank you. Any other items that trustees wish to remove from the consent calendar?
Move ad option.
Okay. Move for approval, moved and seconded. We will try voting. I'm not sure if our voting machine is working tonight or not. Trustee Fuentes, yes, okay, that's approved with trustee Milchiker voting no.
I didn't vote.
Oh, okay, well, it looks like you pressed your no. Do you want to change that, trustee Milchiker?
Yes, I vote yes.
All right, very good. It's a consent calendar is then unanimously approved. And we will start with item 5.1 tonight. 5.1 is the presentation of the Irvine Valley College 2007, 2008 Associated Student Budget. And it looks like we do have our student representative tonight, so if you would please introduce yourself and your title on the Associated Student Government.
Good evening to the President Lang, members of the board, chancellor Mather, President Rockmore, and President McCullough. I'm Matthew Contorelli, Vice President of Associated Students of Irvine Valley College, and assisting me in presenting the budget is our Chief Justice, Sammy Alshati. So with that, do we have it present? Okay. So we've been working quite quite rigorously on our budget for some time. On the first page, you'll see our projected income. Our funding comes from the following sources, much as the same of last year. And we did see the sales for the fall already have already met this estimated income. We've seen surprising increases in our student enrollment, as well as our people purchasing the Associated Student Government sticker, which has been quite profitable, so.
Yeah, we're on page.
Okay. Next, we see an allocation of the funds and a breakdown of the categories that receive our funding, which is very similar to last year. No real surprises on this one. On the next page is a graph, gives a percentage of our funds by different categories, which can be compared to the '06, '07 scholastic year.
We can see the projected growth for '07, '08 in terms of how we've grown based on student enrollment and student population in terms of having like, we have 13,000 students enrolled now in Irvine Valley College, which is phenomenal, as I believe. So that's just showing projected growth and so on and so forth.
Very good. And if you would identify yourself?
Oh, I'm the Chief Justice that not mentioned earlier. I'm Sammy Alshati.
Thank you.
We apologize our president couldn't be here. He had a last-minute emergency he had to take care of, so. So moving on. Whoops. Okay. Is there government operations, conferences such as leadership conferences? We have some students going to, where are they going to?
We do--
Bakersfield Leadership Conference this fall, which is usually quite successful and real beneficial. We've seen an awesome increase in the amount of student activity that takes place, which we had trustee Renaud attend the fashion show on Halloween. It was quite successful and really seeing a positive movement take place on Irvine's campus. Other operations such as contingencies, and we did replace one of the grills in the cafeteria. And according to the students on campus, as well as my stomach, there's been a drastic increase in the food produced at the cafeteria. It's much better, so food is definitely being properly allocated. Co-curricular programs, very similar to last year, and a lot of positive feedback from all the co-curricular programs. Moving further, we see any increase in downcrease in allocation of funds compared to last year may show actually the same percentages being allocated. However, due to the budget, it's very similar to the previous year. We're just allocating the same percentage. However, co-curricular programs may be saving more or less. Moving on further, we see very similar to the previous-- Moving on further, we see very similar to the previous year on the allocation. And journalism, we actually do have funds going to IVC's students participating with the production of Valeriette and journalists for that. And furthermore, on scholarships, we do see an increase of funds. We're able to increase this and bring back foundation scholarships, something that's been beneficial. I know several of my teammates on my speech and debate team last year received scholarships from the foundation specifically, and these students greatly appreciated it, it really made their year, and it's just increasing the atmosphere of Irvine Valley. And with that, our investments are through the local agency investment fund, a state-recommended agency, which has been shown fantastic, to be a fantastic agency to choose, to maximize our funds and properly allocate them. With that, that concludes my budget for the Associated Students of Irvine Valley College, and with that, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak on that.
Thank you, Mr. Conorelli, Mr. Alshati. Let me see if there are some members of the board that have some questions about your report, we'll start with Trustee Fuentes.
One second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Apparently, the two of you have done such a terrific job that there are no other questions regarding your report, so. Trustee Milchiker.
I just want to commend you two and the entire student government on a really excellent presentation and on working so hard on creating a wonderful atmosphere for our students at Irvine Valley College and creating events, such as putting on the Halloween Fashion Show and all the events that you create to make our students feel welcome and part of the college. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Well, I just wanted to commend you on a balanced budget and thank you for coming back again. I believe you were ready to go a month ago, but if you'll all remember, we were delayed, shortened board meeting because of the horrible fires in the neighborhood, so thank you for being patient and congratulations on a balanced budget.
And with that, we'll vote on the budget. Trustee Fuentes. And approved unanimously.
Thank you.
And again, congratulations and commendations from all the members of the board. With that, we will turn to 5.2, which is the presentation of the Saddleback College budget. And I believe that we have with us today, is it Neta?
Neta.
Neta. Dugan?
Dugan.
Dugan, of course. Who is the treasurer of the Saddleback College Academic Center. Ms. Dugan.
Thank you, Trustee Lang. Good evening, Chancellor, trustees, and the student trustee. My name is Neta Dugan, and I'm the Associated Student Government from Saddleback's treasurer, and I will be presenting our 2007-2008 budget. So thank you for having me. During our summer budget committee, we had five, yeah, five voting members, CJ Park, our Associated Student Government President, Justin Brahms, the Vice President, Basim Sarrazadeh, the ICC Director, myself, and Ryan Abila, the ICC Director. We look at six different points when we discuss funding different areas. They include the educational impact, the number of students affected, community awareness of the event, last year's allocated budget expense, and the attendance of the different events on campus. The Senate plays an extremely important role in our budget. They review, they discuss, and they approve everything that we do throughout the year. In the beginning of the year, our contingency was $39,612, or about 4% of the total unrestricted budget. All of our funding conforms to our ASG Constitution, ASG bylaws, and all federal, state, and, I'm sorry, local, state, and federal laws and regulations. This is a chart of our projected income. As you can see, the '07-'08 projected income for this year is $1,088,787, and our total projected budget is $863,753. This is a chart of some of our restricted funds, including our savings accounts, our cafeteria emergency fund, and those equal $225,034. These are charts that display our division allocations throughout the year, just showing the different areas and how much money they receive, and this is the one for the 2007 and 2008 year. This is a comparison with the chart from last year, the 2006-2007 budget of the different division allocations. And this is a chart that compares the two. As you can see, this year, we have spent $49,903 in increases for the different divisions so that they can better their programs and enhance student life at Saddleback. Thank you. And these are examples of our Associated Student Government allocations throughout the year and costs. For example, our bookstore assessment at $40,000, our cafeteria assessment at $58,000, and cafeteria repairs and upgrades at $19,093. And I am happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Thank you for an excellent presentation. Trustee Milchiker.
Yeah, I also want to commend you on an excellent presentation, and really, you take in quite a lot of funds from the bookstore and from the cafeteria.
Yes.
But you spend it on our students.
We do.
And in making our student lives better.
We do.
I have two questions, which really are tangential to the budget. One of them is, are your ASG Associated Student Government meetings open to all students? And how would a student that might be watching this program today get involved in the governance of the college, like you, become a part of student government?
That's a great question. All of our meetings are open meetings, we do post agendas 72 hours in advance, and we encourage all students to come. We hold events all throughout the year, and all students are involved. We also have every Tuesday what we call the outreach table, that is set up, and it's Associated Student Government members, and we sit at the table and we show what the student government is doing on campus, and we hold events throughout the year. And we also have numerous Saddleback students coming to our offices, asking questions, and we promote our programs, and, you know, we let students know that we are here for them, and if they want to be a part, it's something that we're open to. We love new members, and that's what keeps Saddleback going, our student government going every year. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Very good. Trustee Williams.
Yes, Ms. Dugan.
Yes, thank you.
Well, I see the logoed shirt, I see you have a few friends in the audience, are they members of student government?
Actually, some of them are members and some of them are not, so some of them are just here to support our student government that knew about the presentation, but a lot of them are members of the Saddleback Student Government.
This is a chance, could you introduce them to us, those that are members?
I can introduce them. Right down here, we have Melissa Cornelius, she is our Senate Vice President Pro Tem. Going on, we have Adam Disignato, he is one of our Executive Cabinet members, we have Anthony Saurashid, he is our Senator from Social and Behavioral Science, we have Nick Nikbok, he is an Executive Cabinet member. Moving to the back, we have Andrew Olson, he is the Senator of Liberal Arts. Oh, sorry, I made a mistake. Moving on, we have Travis Fuller, he's an Executive Cabinet member, Justin Brahms, our Vice President, Justin Santiago, he sits on our Inner Club Council, Basim Sarrazadeh, he is our Inner Club Council Director. Moving to the back, that's Fausha Debezorgi, and he is an Executive Cabinet, he's actually the Director of Commerce, so he worked with me on this.
Great. Thank you all for coming to the meeting.
Thank you so much.
Yes, welcome to all of you tonight. Seeing no other questions, let's vote on the Saddleback budget.
Motion, Mr.?
Oh, yes, please, thank you, Trustee Fuentes, is there a second? Okay, moved and seconded, let's vote. Very good, passes unanimously, again, congratulations.
Thank you so much, everyone.
There's also two other individuals that I think it's important to acknowledge for the role that they play in working with our student governments, and those are our Director of Student Affairs, Helen Locke at Irvine Valley College, and Dr. Maria Breznard at Saddleback College. Thank both of you for your efforts. And with that, we will move on to our next item, which is 6.1. 6.1 is the discussion item regarding institutional effectiveness. We're going to come back to the consent calendar, I have not forgotten about that. And leading our, well, let me introduce the chancellor, who will introduce people that will be leading our discussion tonight.
Thank you, President Lang. I'm pleased to report that for the first time in the history of our district, we have prepared an analysis of institutional effectiveness, and commensurate with that, we have produced these annual reports, one for Irvine Valley College, one for Saddleback College, that you have before you. And so now, we can say that we have data-driven information to evaluate the accomplishment and the successes of our students. And we hope that we will be reviewing this data to see our strengths and also areas where we need to continue to enhance for the sake of the continued student success or to increase student success. These reports are of critical importance in order to demonstrate our transparency to the college, as well as district communities internally, as well as externally, and these reports will be available through our web to the taxpayers for their information as well. In this effort, I would like to recognize Dr. Andrea Serbin, Vice Chancellor of Technology and Learning Services, as well as researchers by the name Denise Insong from Saddleback College, is Denise here? Sybil Georgiana from Irvine Valley College, Skar Simpson, Diane Ryapka, and Shuka Turabi for their contributions to this publication. And I would also like to recognize the college presidents, Dr. Rockmore and Dr. McCullough for their support in this important endeavor. As I indicated, this is the first time in the history of the district that we are doing something like this, it's about time. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Vice Chancellor Serbin for the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. This will be a test in my effectiveness to deliver this presentation in 4.5 minutes, so I'll get right to it. These reports, I'd like to point out, are the culmination of a process that started about a year ago with discussions about what are appropriate measures of institutional effectiveness, what are they helping with, and how we are going to use them in conjunction with other information that is available to achieve these fundamental purposes, which are the improvement of instructional programs and student services, and helping to support initiatives. Additionally, institutional effectiveness core indicators are helping us inform the community and responding to the accreditation standards. These kind of reports will respond to the standards that relate to having college-level indicators of effectiveness, as well as presenting quality assurance to our public. And institutional effectiveness, as we discussed before, fundamentally, it's about the ability of an institution to match its performance to the purposes it has established through its mission and vision statements, and to the needs and expectation of its stakeholders. And through these discussions and the review of various measures and core indicators that the literature indicates, and also the legislation that is currently in place in the state of California, these five major categories have emerged as being meaningful to be included in this type of report. And of course, student learning and achievement is the most important area, and this is why we are here. Also, student outreach and responsiveness to the community as well, because county colleges have a primary role in providing access. However, we also need to acknowledge that all this work wouldn't happen without the resources that are needed. So the sections on faculty and staff, applications of technology and facility and fiscal support are there to inform about our effectiveness in these resource areas. We will not talk about these three areas tonight, not because they are not critically important, but for the sake of time, we will touch on the first two areas very briefly. And these are some highlights from each college in the area of student learning and achievement. Saddleback College has been extremely successful in course completion rates college-wide and in basic skills, English, as well as weekend courses. Math is an actual area of challenge, both in terms of college readiness of incoming freshmen, as well as the ability of those who come prepared under college level to succeed in basic skills math. And certainly, we agree with Greenspan that we should teach our students more math, and this is the key to success. Saddleback is very effective in the matriculation and persisting of first-time college students, 70 to 20 years old, and this is really important, because many studies have indicated that persistence is key to achieving subsequent educational goals. Saddleback has also had a remarkable increase in the number of degrees awarded with a high level achievement of 607. As we discussed in January, there are transfer rates calculated by the State Chancellor's Office, and there is a methodology that has been widely accepted statewide. And using that methodology, Saddleback has consistently had higher actual transfer rates than the expected transfer rates for its college population and surrounding area, and it has the 12 highest rate in the state. And it's only second in Orange County, and it's great to have two colleges in the same district compete, it's only second to Irvine Valley College. The ARC State Accountability Framework, you may be familiar that about two years ago, legislation was passed in maybe 1417, which has created an accountability framework, because the state is interested in showing to what degree each institution is performing in key indicators of effectiveness. And these are the major indicators of effectiveness that the state is now providing for each college. Saddleback is exceeding its average of peer groups for four out of the six measures, and it's also close to the highest rate for the improvement rate of credit basic skills. And these are rates, so, you know, this taking into account a progression level that's beyond numeric volumes. So it's a much improved framework compared to the performance measures used in the past with the P4E indicators that were used a few years ago. Also, in terms of outreach to the community, Saddleback has done a remarkable job. The number of applicants for the fall semester has increased by 25% over the past four years. And their enrollment rate, that is, the rate of those who apply and subsequently enroll is about 61%. This is a very important area, because the increase in the number of applicants and the high enrollment rate is what ensures increased enrollments at the college and increased number of FTS. It is also remarkable that Saddleback, it's the college of choice, almost 50% of the top is trying to find graduating class, and about 36% of the Saddleback Valley who find graduating class enroll at Saddleback in the year immediately following high school graduation. And 78% of the first-time college students are from local feeder high schools. And while there is no statewide data easily available for this comparison, I can tell you, looking at other districts and talking to other colleges, that this is a remarkably high percent, which means that really Saddleback, through its offerings and through the dedication of the staff, it's doing a remarkable job in attracting and really serving as a community college in the real sense of a community. IVC has also done really well in the overall completion rates, and the same challenge of math is present there. It seems to be a universal challenge, this is not a problem only here for the two colleges in our district, math is a universal problem for all our county colleges. An area that may need further analysis is related to the decrease in the number of degrees, especially in the last two years. As we discussed before, IVC has very high transfer rates, and is the third highest transfer rate in the state, and the highest rate in rate in the state and the highest rate in Orange County by the methodology from the state. The ARC indicators, IVC has done really well, has exceeded the average of its peer groups for all six measures, and it's actually the highest rate within its peer group for the annual successful course completion rate for credit basic skills, which is a remarkable achievement. In terms of outreach and responsiveness to the community, the number of applicants have also increased at IVC with the enrollment rate of about 66%. And also remarkable is that in terms of the students enrolled in at least one emeritus course, the headcount has increased by 60% over the last five years. And I can guarantee you from looking at all the data, it's not only mature people, it's also younger people who are increasingly interested in the offerings. So to conclude, the data in this report, and of course, the reports contain a great deal of detail, and this data has been developed in working with the college researchers. And particularly, I would like to acknowledge the contribution by Denise Insion because she has actually pulled the weight in producing most of the information related to student learning and achievement and the student outreach. I would also like to acknowledge the directors of technology of the two colleges, Frank Hong and Mark Schaffelbein, who provided information for the applications of technology chapter, and our accounting office, Ben Mueller in particular, and her staff, who have helped with information in the fiscal and facility support area. I would also like to note that this is the first year we do this, and every time you do something, the first time, there is always a better way to do it the next time. And so hopefully, as we move into the future, there will be refinements, and we'll try to use the information in the best possible way to help the colleges further improve and do even a greater job than they do now. And if the college presidents would like to make any comments, that would be great as well. Thank you.
Would Presidents McCullough or Rockmore wish to make any comments?
It's nice to see the figures support what we already know, and that these are two great colleges. And the staff and the administration and the students and everyone concerned with these numbers should be commended because it really does give a heartwarming tribute, I think, to the hard work that's done in both institutions.
Thank you. President Rockwell?
I couldn't have said that better. I agree fully. Congratulations go out to the campus, the faculty, staff, administration for the hard work that they do to make this all possible. We had been working through our strategic planning process on a focus area called institutional effectiveness. And about that time, Andrea was hired, and thanks go out to her because she helped facilitate the very beginnings of that focus group. That has led to some very good conclusions for us and some things that we can continue to work on. And that focus remains in our continuing process through strategic planning. And we're very happy to be data-driven.
Very good. Yes, I'd also like to congratulate the colleges as well on how well they performed in the study that was done. Obviously, you have a lot to be proud of. Everybody within the college community, I think, has a lot to be proud of. But I know that there were a number of areas that you identified in this study in which, you know, we can learn from and perhaps devote some resources to, to improve ourselves. What's happening with respect to those kinds of things that were identified in the study? What are we doing with the information that we've got, I guess? How is that informing future decisions that are being made?
The data is just new to us in many respects. Matter of fact, I just handed it out to the Planning and Budget Council today, so we're going to be looking at that. We haven't had a chance to really analyze the data, but since it is data-driven and we do have a strategic plan, we're going to see how it coordinates with our strategic plan, and I'm sure it does.
And in our case, because of that focus group, I do notice, again, this is very fresh, this information, but there are some themes that were recognized in our strategic planning. And in fact, there were a number of strategies that were put together to address those, including funding. So to be more direct, these will be applied directly to the decision-making process in the future.
Very good. We have some others that wish to ask some questions. We'll start with Student Trustee Renaud.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Serbin. My question is just for Saddleback College. I see that many of their percentages have risen, and that's very exciting. And I understand that these rates are very good for our college and for IVC. But what brought concern to me is the overall annual successful course completion rate. And I see that that has lowered, and I know that's not by much. But just a question, why do you think that has lowered, and what can we do to correct that? Or is it too early to tell because this was just brought out? Or it's just a concern?
It's a little bit too early to do the analysis right now. I don't know the answer to the question. I know it's important to us, and we will be pursuing it, but like I said, we've just received this data, so we'll have to take some time to look at it.
And I would like to add that the way these reports are used, that's exactly that. You first produce the data, and then this data is looked at by various constituencies. And the areas that require some additional attention and focus are determined by looking at these overall numbers, and then additional analysis will be done to answer this specific question. So basically, this is exactly the purpose a report like this serves. It's a high-level institutional aggregated type of information. It's like a health check type of information, you know? And, you know, if you are doing well on all your measures, like, you know, blood pressure and cholesterol, you don't ask any more questions. You go home and you are happy. If you find that in any of them you are not doing well, you are going to be asked to do additional testing. So that's exactly kind of what we are doing here. This is very high-level. It's core indicators of performance, and if any variation that's significant enough is noted in any of them, that's where additional questions are brought up and additional analysis is performed. But where we do well and where the colleges have done exceptionally well is like the health check. If you do really well, there is no point in doing additional testing. You already see that you are doing well. You want to narrow the area of focus and analysis on those areas where you feel that, you know, there is a downward trend or there is too much fluctuation, and you like to understand why. So that's kind of, I just wanted to clarify how this is intended to be used, and that's exactly how it's intended to be used.
Thank you. Trustee Melchior.
I just want to, once again, I commend Vice Chancellor Serbin on doing this data report. As both presidents said, this is something we already knew. And I also want to commend President McCullough for Saddleback's college's great success and President Rockmore for Irvine Valley College's great success. Everyone I've ever talked to loves the colleges, and you can tell by how many students from the capistrano-unified and Saddleback unified attend our colleges and how the impression that we're making on the local students and our local constituents. I think we have to get this transfer rate, this incredibly high transfer rate from both colleges, out to the local press as quickly as possible because I think our students want to know that they have a very incredibly high rate of transferring if they were smart enough to choose Saddleback or Irvine Valley College. So I would suggest publicizing this. I don't know if you want to send all the local newspapers these two reports or just send them a press report about this, but I would suggest doing that. Do you have any plans to do that?
I think it's the college's decision of how they intend to use this data. We are trying to facilitate providing information, but it is the college's decision how they best fit to use this information.
Okay. Very, very good. Thank you for that fine presentation. And with that, we will move on to the next item, which is 6.2. 6.2 is a discussion item that involves the campus safety and security campuses at all of our site locations. And again, I'll ask the chancellor to introduce this item.
Thank you, President Lang. Trustee Williams and others have been making the case for consideration of enhanced safety and security measures in light of tragic incidents on a number of school, college, and university campuses throughout the nation. In light of this, we have provided some information to the board last month. Some questions had risen. We have worked with both college presidents, Provost Kopecky and Saddleback College Police Chief Harry Palmer, among others. And in fact, I asked Chief Palmer to provide board some information that I provided through the update, and he was also instrumental in putting together this agenda item to demonstrate to the board that we are considering this safety and security measure in a comprehensive way, and the cameras are one part of it. With that, I'd like to ask Chief Palmer to come to the podium and see if trustees have any questions that he can respond to. I plan to bring a recommendation in this regard to the board next month for your consideration in action. At this point, we are providing information consistent with the questions that had come up at the board meeting last month.
Okay. First, I'll ask Chief Palmer, is there any other additional comments that you wish to make before I turn to the trustees for questions?
No, sir.
Okay. Very good. Trustee Fuentes.
Chancellor Mather. But I understood that it was the consensus of the board at our last discussion that we were going to look at a policy development, language about privacy and language about the imposition of cameras on our campus, and talk about some philosophy and talk about what it is we're trying to achieve and where will we go and where we won't go with these intrusive devices in the lives of people on campus. This proposal or this agenda item for next month, is it a matter of buying hardware or are we going to have the opportunity to talk about policy development first? Seems to me that we need to put the horse before the cart or before we move on to buying hardware.
Thank you, Trustee Fuentes. Would you like to respond?
Sure, I'll be happy to respond. We are considering both the matters pretty much simultaneously. We wanted to provide the information that was requested. In fact, Chief Palmer has provided us a draft or a sample of such a board policy that we intend to take it through our district board policy and administrative regulations committee process. That does take a little time, but we are working on that simultaneously. So at this point, we're just trying to address as many issues as we can.
Well, my concern would be that how do we start buying hardware before we know philosophically and a policy development as to how we want to utilize if we do decide to bring onboard cameras? It seems to me that we would develop the policy, we would set forth what it is appropriate, and then you'd have a framework or an outline to talk about hardware. I can't see how you could do that in the same meeting.
Well, your point is well taken. We have indicated some policy-level matters here that, for example, we are not going to provide cameras with the intention to invade anyone's privacy, or we're not going to provide cameras in the classrooms or restrooms and those kinds of situations. But your point is well taken. We'll do per direction of the board.
Mr. President, let me continue on that point. Where we have seen the tragedies on campus, which is obviously no question, that all of us are concerned about the safety of our students and of our faculty and of all those who are present on our campuses. But we have seen some of the most severe slaughter take place inside the classroom. And at the present time, I haven't seen anything that addresses how it is that we have the possibility of a tragedy going on inside the classroom while we are filming the quad or the cafeteria line. Just seems to me that we are getting ahead of ourselves.
Let me recognize Chief Palmer and see if you'd like to make any comments regarding any of Trustee Fuentes' observations, not to put you on the spot or anything, Chief Palmer.
Trustee Fuentes, your point on target. That's all I have to say. Your point on target.
Okay. Very good. Let's recognize some other trustees then in their remarks. Trustee Melchior.
I echo Trustee Fuentes' concerns, and I have to ask Chancellor Mather that I was somewhat surprised when I read this board report because it too was my understanding that the majority of the board wanted to do a study about how our colleges respond to emergencies. And I thought that is what we were going to get. We were going to get a report from our chief of police, Chief of Police Palmer, about how our emergencies are responded to at Saddleback College. And I would be interested in hearing from both colleges how the colleges respond to emergencies, how they counsel students, how they contact students. And I would even like a report on how the decisions were made to close the campuses in the recent fires. I know the campuses were closed very smoothly and well, but I'd like a report on how the decisions were made and how these decisions were made and how the information was distributed to the community as well, and how well we did and if we can do better next time. Because I'd like to study that issue and look at it, just like we had data on both colleges, and we found out they're doing a wonderful job. And I neglected in thanking our wonderful administrators and faculty members because it's in the classroom that the work of the colleges is done, and they're the ones that are transferring our students, so I have to add that for the record. But I think we do have to not put the cart before the horse and suddenly go out and buy a bunch of hardware until we know what we're doing and how we're doing it. I also know that because of a really unfortunate incident that took place on our campus many, many years ago, and it turned out to be just a random serial killer, that Marion Bergerson carried a bill to the legislator in California that all of the campuses report on their crime statistics. And I just wondered, I'm asking Chief Palmer, how our campus, because this information is required to be reported by all colleges in the state, how our colleges are doing in this particular arena compared to the other colleges in the state of California?
It's not only a state requirement, it's a federal requirement. And actually, the state was forced to do that as a result of federal legislation called the GNA and CLERI Act, the Campus Security Act of 1990. We have been in compliance with that law since I've been chief of police. And in comparison with our statistics to other community colleges within the state, we're extremely low in crime activity. In fact, I give an annual report that is much more comprehensive than what the state and the federal law requires. First and foremost, that law, the state and federal law, only requires statistics of Part I crimes under the FBI's Uniform Crime Reporting System, which is the serious crimes, homicide, robbery, burglary, those kinds of things. The most prolific crime on any of our campuses in our The most prolific crime on any of our campuses in our district is petty theft, crimes of less than $400. Now, that has low, or very high probability of occurrence, but it has relatively low consequences. So, we look at that as a prevention measure, and we try to partner with our community students, faculty, and staff to try to prevent that kind of crime. It's much easier to prevent a theft than it is to try to solve it. Conversely, when we're talking about an active shooter on campus, a random spree killing incident similar to Virginia Tech, that's a very low probability of occurrence statistically speaking, but it has very, very high consequences. So consequently, in my report, both reports refer to this, is that we need, as a leadership team, to come to some kind of rational understanding as to how much resources we put in to preventing and perhaps suppressing a very low probability of occurrence crime with high consequences as it relates to everything else that we're dealing with, such as fires, and natural disasters, and things like that. So, let me just stress one thing. Security cameras, again, is another tool. That's all it is. And, both colleges have gone through very comprehensive analyses as to where these cameras should be placed to protect assets, and also to provide information in high areas, high activity areas. Is it going to prevent a spree killing on campus? Certainly not. I don't know, to some degree, that anything might prevent some of those things. There are some times, they're almost unpreventable. But, the comprehensiveness of your campus security protocols in both institutions is very detailed, and the decision-making process is pursuant to the National Incident Management System, Incident Command System. We consult with the institutional leaders, and you'd be surprised just how fast and coordinated these kinds of decisions are. But, let me really kind of focus on the decision at hand here. $600,000 plus whatever is being looked at for funding of security cameras is a significant amount of money. The fact of the matter is, though, that security cameras do play a role in both prevention and deterrence, and as an institution of this size, speaking from a district perspective, we have a need for security cameras. Is it going to prevent everything from occurring? Again, no. But, I can tell you this, without them, we're not going to progress any further. With them, it can be a baseline that we can continue to build on, and it will also be part of that synergistic effect within the overall comprehensiveness of providing protective services on this campus, and in the district. I just came from a week at University of Wisconsin-Stout, training their institutional leaders, including their chancellor, in responding to a critical incident, an Incident Command System. And, they're better prepared now, and I think we'll be better prepared if the board so selects to approve this agenda item with regard to our security cameras.
Yeah, again, this is not on the agenda for approval tonight. It's still here for...
I'm planting seeds for the night, for the time that it is.
Okay, very good. Trustee Padberg.
Well, I think that Trustee Fuentes, and actually Chief Palmer, have made many of my points. This is not a preventive process to have video cameras. And, we did get a draft policy in our confidential chancellor's report. I have no idea why it should have been considered confidential. It's a 10-page policy, really more of a procedure than a policy, and clearly, this has got to be vetted through the shared governance process, and I would agree that we're getting the cart before the horse. We should develop the policy first. I'm really concerned about the cameras. We are in two, our two major campuses are in the two safest cities in Orange County. I believe that when you post signs, and you will have to post signs, saying "Video Recording in Process," you wave a red flag and say, "Oh, we got a crime problem here," you know, and I think it's going to drive students away when they see that. I thought I was coming to a safe campus, and you've got signs and video cameras all over the place. I'm also concerned, because our student trustee at the last meeting said that the students were behind this, and when I did further investigation, I discovered that there was a big demonstration of posing security cameras at IBC. I'm not sure if that occurred at Saddleback, but I just am concerned that we're moving forward here. I would rather see $600,000 go to counseling. If you look at special peer counseling, not the usual kind of counseling we do, if you look at all of the histories of the shootings, there was some student, some person, who this shooter had contacted and shared information. If we could have gotten to that person, and that person could have reported it, yes, maybe we could have prevented the actual shooting. So, I think there's some much more effective ways, and I am really concerned about having video cameras.
Any response, Chief Palmer?
Yes, I'd just like to emphasize, Vice President Tealson, as the same thing I believe at IBC. I can't speak for IBC in this particular arena, but certainly, our Department Vice President Tealson, and Student Services, and within the Counseling Division, we've developed a protocol that we profile the circumstances surrounding a specific incident when it's reported to us. I know the word profiling has a lot of connotations. We don't profile individuals, we profile circumstances. And, this is a proven methodology that many of the institutions have adopted. But, I can tell you this, we, it's a multi-level staff involvement criteria, that if we get an indication from a faculty member, from any member within our community of a potential problem, or a student that has certain stresses that is causing a variety of different behaviors, we get together as a staff, and we start focusing on, not necessarily an intervention, but at least a plan. And, I'm pleased to say that the emphasis at Saddleback College is on prevention rather than suppression, and I take a lot of pride in working very closely with our Student Services people. We don't always agree, believe me, but, you know, that's healthy, when there's discourse, there's a healthy decision-making process.
Academic Senate President Gabriel.
I have two comments tonight. One is that IBC did a pretty comprehensive security and safety plan, and items were costed out over a three-year period, and I'm actually surprised that it's not in your board agenda packet. I know that a summary is in your board agenda packet, but the summary doesn't capture the information that we included in our plan, and maybe the board would like to see what IBC thinks would be important in terms of campus safety and security. So, maybe that could come back to the board at the December meeting. It's a pretty comprehensive plan, and it was, it involved all shared governance groups, and it involved the college council, and it was pretty comprehensive. We spent a lot of time with it, and the security cameras were just a small portion of that plan, so it's unfortunate that you're only looking at the security camera angle, because there's a lot that goes with security and safety issues. Second thing is, I'm very surprised that there's a confidential board policy in your packet regarding security and safety. The board policy and Administrative RAG Advisory Council usually does board policies, and to my knowledge, and I haven't missed a meeting, we haven't done a board policy on this item. And, I think it might be a good idea, before we start installing cameras, that we have a policy that helps us shape where cameras go.
Sir, can I comment on that?
Yes, please.
Quickly. The board policy, this is not a board policy that the trustees has. This is a policy that the task force combined in our report, which you were part of, that we collected from other educational institutions, and I really leaned heavily on Caltech. They have confidential information of top-secret national assets in their institution. They work on some very high-level projects. So, we basically cut and pasted their policy with regard to security camera implementation, and this is simply a model for us to look at, that when we get into the policy development, that we would use just as a format to take a look at. So, I hope that clarifies, and we're not trying to put forth any kind of policy behind the shared governance process.
Thank you. Trustee Williams.
Well, there's a number of things mentioned by my colleagues that I would like to respond to. The first one that comes to mind would be, not really the security camera issue, but the evacuation of the campuses. Trustee Melchiker. I emailed, forwarded email that I received in my county office to the chancellor, and I CC'd quite a few to the board president from the Orange County Incident Command Center at Loma Ridge on the fires. It was school closures, public entity closures, air quality reports from the Orange County Healthcare Agency, which was subsequently, obviously, read by and implemented by Superintendent of Schools Bill Habermill, because they canceled athletic events. But, I, on a daily basis, sometimes numerous times a day, I forwarded these emails to the chancellor, so he was kept informed as best I could from the county level and the board president. So, there was a lot that went into the decisions to close these campuses, but I'll let the chancellor brief you on that, because that was his decision. As we've mentioned before, and as the chief has mentioned, this security camera issue has gone well beyond security cameras. It's a system, it's a tool that's in place. I heard a comment that, "Well, we're not going to put cameras in a classroom, because, I don't know why, privacy issues, but the shootings took place in a classroom." Well, one common denominator with the shooters of recent days is they move from place to place. This is a tool that enables campus safety to track the movement of an active shooter as he, and it has been a he each time, goes from building to building, classroom to classroom. So, it's a tool to track the movement of a violent offender. As far as, "Oh, it can't happen here," I'm sure the people at Virginia Tech thought the very same thing. Here in Orange County in 1976, I'm sure the students at Cal State Fullerton thought the very same thing. When Edward Alockway moved from floor to floor and room to room in the library at Cal State Fullerton, by the way, my daughter's terrified to go in that library to this day, because she's seen it. I told her about it, she Googled it, she read about it, and, you know, the "it cannot happen here" mentality is like putting your head in the ground. We need to be proactive, we need to move forward with this, and we can't sidetrack this and have it fall victim to a policy discussion. We can acquire the equipment, move forward with an RFP, decide that we're going to install a safety system, but before you go live and go active with it, we'll have a policy in place, okay? But, let's not wait until "it can't happen here" before we do something about it, and this is our opportunity. $600,000 is a small investment in the safety on our campuses. We need to get off the dime, we need to make a decision, that's our role, we're policymakers. I know this is discussion, we need to follow a recommendation, the chancellor's working on it, we need to move forward. Our officers need more tools to keep the campuses safe. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Williams. Trustee Jay.
Yes, I'd like to echo many of John's comments. I do think that security cameras are exactly nothing more than that, they are a tool. I think one of the things that really happens is not only our, I haven't been in a mall or a public building or a courthouse for years without having seen video surveillance underway, video cameras installed, you know, all kinds of warnings everywhere, and I'm certainly not offended about that. I feel much safer, frankly, because they're there. I think once there's a spree underway, as Trustee Williams brought up, that directing and controlling the situation as much as possible is helped tremendously by security cameras that could be following somebody around who's been on great bodily harm on other people. So, I just think that it's a tool. I remember years ago, and this is on another campus, but it was whether we're going to allow security officers to carry sidearms. And, it was a huge discussion for a year. Finally, they elected to allow security officers to carry firearms. They were a tool, as well, to be used only, obviously, in a very bad situation. But, I do think that the cameras are a deterrent, just the fact that they're announced, and they're a tremendous help if an incident starts. The security people can keep track of it. I'm also very interested in the fact that a mass, from what I've read here, that we do now have a way of notifying everybody for a mass evacuation if that's necessary, and I understand it went beautifully a couple of weeks ago when the fires occurred and so forth. But, I just think, as a big gun owner and all that kind of stuff, guns are nothing to fool around with, and, boy, if somebody has one, I know you've spotted them once or twice, right here on campus in a football stadium, for instance, it's a very high-stress situation for your people. You may never have caught the guys, but they were spotted.
They turned out to be cops.
They turned out to be cops. Okay, but the point is, I just think that they're a tool that we should install. There's nothing wrong with policy, I'm all in favor of it, but also, knowing how these groups around here operate, that could take months and months and months, and I'm in favor of giving the security people the tool, another tool, for them to protect students and employees and the community right now, without belaboring this at all.
Thank you, Trustee Jay. Trustee Williams.
There were so many things I wanted to mention, I didn't write them down. The other point I wanted to make was, I'm a big believer in preventive measures, as the chief has mentioned. I think if you put a sign at the entrance to each of our three campuses now stating a public safety philosophy, we have security cameras in place. You don't know where, when, you know, if you let people know there are security cameras, good lighting at night, and there are protective measures, that goes a long way to selling safety, because the three campuses are very different, and the profile of Saddleback College with rolling hills, 200 acres, is vastly different from Irvine Valley. This is something we're going to hear in the recommendation. It's not going to be a cookie-cutter approach, that what works at one campus works at another. They'll be specialized to the needs, and this is something I feel very strongly about. We need to give these tools to our campus police who have sworn to protect us and our students. So, let's not sidetrack this. I do not believe a majority of this board said, "Let's hold off on this, derail this thing while we study and talk about policy for several meetings." We need to move forward on this. The chancellor will have a recommendation, we'll study it, we'll debate it, and I hope we come up with something we can approve before the thing, as I say, goes live. We will have a policy, and, Chief Palmer, did you say you looked at other policies that are in place at other educational institutions?
Oh, yeah.
A model policy we can look at?
We looked at, quite, just not me, I mean, the task force members looked at at least a dozen different policies, ranging from very complex and to very simple. Some of the private institutions have very simple policies. Of course, they have a different protocol that they operate under with regard to the law.
But, as discussion, I don't want to tie this up any more than we have to. I don't want to go home at a decent hour tonight, but we need to have a healthy discussion, but let's not sidetrack this project to a policy debate. We can move parallel and develop both.
Okay. Thank you, Trustee Williams, and also thank you to you, Chief Palmer, for a very fruitful discussion, I think, and we'll continue on here. So, we're going to conclude our discussion at this point on 6.2, and move to 6.3, which is a discussion item on compliance with the 50% law, and again, I'll have the chancellor introduce this item.
Thank you, President Lang. Let me mention for the benefit of those as to what this law is all about. We're talking about compliance with 50% law, according to which 50% of the district expenditures need to be on faculty salaries and benefits, and also, this includes instructional aides who assist faculty in one way or the other in the classroom instruction. As I understand it, that this law became the law many years ago with its strong backing from the faculty union statewide. It is a complex matter, so we do have a presentation lined up here for the board by Deputy Chancellor Gary Portner and District Director of Fiscal Services Beth Muller. Before we turn it over to them, let me also mention that, interestingly, as... Before we turn it over to them, let me also mention that interestingly, as part of the calculations, counselors and librarians, their salaries and benefits do not count as part of the 50% calculations. It's an interesting exemption because counselors and librarians are considered faculty. We also have the fourth highest faculty salary schedule in the state, but somehow that doesn't figure in the 50% calculations. And this past year, we were above 50% just slightly. And at least one-third of the community college districts up and down the state have had some concerns with respect to not being able to be within or above 50% in terms of the instructional expenditures. We also have 24 faculty positions above the state obligation. That's why we didn't, we weren't hiring full-time faculty members, for example, last year. Now looking at the situation, of course, we need to. So we act when we see a strong rationale. In the meantime, nevertheless, I established an advisory council on compliance with 50% law. This council was chaired by Deputy Chancellor Gary Portner. It was a 17-member advisory council with representation from administration, faculty members from the academic senate, as well as the Faculty Association and CSCA representatives, along with directors of fiscal services from both Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College. They have given us recommendations which are mostly general in scope. So I have asked Deputy Chancellor Portner to be working with college presidents and the provost and others to give me more specific and measurable recommendations so that we can begin to address the 50% issue in such a way that at the end of the year, we will be in compliance this year and also next year. I know this is a difficult matter, but nevertheless, we are interested in specific steps, and I think you are going to hear some suggestions along those lines tonight. We have also asked for a target as to about how much money we need to be not spending or spending appropriately. But we are committed to addressing this in a comprehensive way without treating any matter as some sort of a sacred cow. So we'll continue to work on this thing, keep the board apprised. And with that, I'd like to, if I may, President Lang, turn it over to Deputy Chancellor Portner and Director Beth Muller.
The 50% law is a topic of active discussion around the district for a number of months now. We've discussed various aspects of it in a piecemeal form at the board level several times. And so this is an opportunity to talk about the full scope of the law and the ramifications. One clarification I'd like to make, just to save the union, their desire to make the correction, is that we're the fourth highest average salary paid, not the fourth highest salary schedule. I really don't know where we are in the salary schedule, but it's, the average salary that we-
Our OSH rate is nowhere near.
See? There they were. Okay. With that being said, some of the topics that we hope to cover are what is the law, what type of expenditures help in the calculation, what type of expenditures hurt, the reasons, some of the reasons that we feel are for the decline in the percentage, the exemption process, if in fact we end up in the future lower than 50%. And what action has occurred or is occurring right now to try to raise our percentage comfortably above 50%. Beth and I are going to share the presentation, and we have in the audience here also Carol, or we did, oh, there's Carol, and Davit is here also, they're still here. And so if you have any questions later having to do with the college-level expenditures, they can help provide some answers. And we'll start off with Beth.
And I should add that I think it's only fair, since I gave Vice Chancellor Serbin four and a half minutes, that I provide you five minutes at least.
I need to talk fast then, right? All right. I'm going to start tonight's presentation defining the 50% law. It is defined in Ed Code 84362. It requires community college districts to spend at least half of their current cost, or their current expense of education for classroom instructor salaries and benefits and classroom instructional aide salaries and benefits. Only those two items go to what we call the good side, the numerator of the calculation. Everything else that we spend goes to the denominator. The current expense of education includes unrestricted general fund only, so expenses only from the unrestricted general fund, and it's only actual expenses. It is not budget, it is what we actually spend. There are no categorical programs or grants included in the calculation, and no capital projects, equipment, or transfers out. Several weeks ago, I prepared this chart as a way to help people understand what goes into the calculation. It doesn't cover all the items, but it covers many of the more important items. So if you look at the chart, you'll see that we have a help and a hurt column, we also have numerator and denominator. If you look, there's an X in every denominator, in every item, every row for the denominator. Things that help us are full-time classroom instructors, part-time faculty instructors. You'll see things that hurt us, such as reassigned time, the cost of faculty who use banked OSH, the cost of librarians, the cost of counselors. However, as Chancellor Mather said earlier, counselors and librarians are considered faculty for community colleges. On the next page, we have non-classroom classified, but we also have, that hurts us, it just is included in the denominator. Learning center technicians, tutors, and classroom lab techs are included in the numerator. So that's on the good side. When you have a cost that's in the numerator, it's also in the denominator because it's part of the whole. Benefits for instructional employees, whether it's a faculty member or a learning center tutor or a classroom lab tech, is to the good side, it's in the numerator. Non-instructional employee benefits, such as classified, or your librarians, your managers, your administrators, all of those types of benefits are strictly denominator cost. Supplies, including instructional supplies, are solely a denominator cost. It does not help the calculation. Books, non-instructional supplies, those are all denominator cost. All your operational items, with one exception, are denominator cost. When we have contract education, which we have a program here at Saddleback College, their cosmetology program, we can include that expense of the faculty members that we contract out for, for the program, in the numerator. There are some expenses which may be excluded from the calculation. Some of these are things that are coded for student development, foundation, community outreach, debt retirement, site improvement, and equipment purchases. Now, the 50% law. There are three different laws regarding faculty employment. There is the 50% law, which we're discussing tonight, our full-time faculty obligation, which I think everyone's heard us speak about, a 75-25 ratio, the full-time faculty to part-time faculty. Each of these laws is independent of the other, one does not relate to the other. So while we might think that, as we did, that we were fine on our full-time faculty obligation, we might be nearing the 50% calculation or decreasing in the 50% calculation as we did this year. So while you're doing fine with one law, you aren't, that doesn't necessarily mean that you're doing fine with another law. The four-year history of the 50% calculation is shown next. In 2003-4, we were at 53.38. The next year, we dropped to 51.81. I believe some of this was due, which we'll show on the next slide, after our early retirement program. In 2005-6, we dropped to 50.31. Now, in 2005-6, we had to re-code some of our reassigned time in faculty that were released to a different TOPS code so that it was no longer included in the numerator. And this affected, I believe, some of the calculation also. And then just last year, our most recent calculation brought us to 50.03. When we realized at the end of 2005-6 that we were nearing 50%, the fiscal staff decided that we better take a closer look and do some work on this to improve our calculation. So the fiscal staff from the two colleges, Davit, Carol, and myself, and some district staff, met with Rancho Santiago and Coast Community Colleges to discuss their practices. What do they do? You know, their calculations were also close to 50%. And are they implementing some practices that perhaps we could do, something different? So we met with them last winter. After meeting with the two other local community colleges, we came back and met again, and we created a list of things that we could do to try and improve our calculation. Before we implemented this change, I reviewed it with our auditors. And at that time, they were fine with everything, so we implemented these practices. During the year-end close, I was concerned about the calculation, so I made a preliminary calculation and found that we had not met our 50%. At that time, I went back to the two colleges, we had not closed the books yet, so are there any entries that you can do that would help our calculation? Davit and Carol looked at their books, there were some expenses they could move to categoricals and move things around a little bit. All, you know, was proper and correct, and we made those, transfers from general fund to restricted accounts, all in an effort to meet our 50% calculation. I want to impress here that the 50% calculation is a moving target. It's very difficult at any point in time to say this is what it's going to be because it's constantly changing. It's very difficult to project this percentage until the books are closed. Some of those reasons are because it's based on actual expenses, and until you close your books, you don't know what you've, actually, your total expenses are. Salaries, which is the largest, largest part of our expenditures, vary from month to month. Two payrolls are not posted until the very end of our fiscal year. The certificated payroll is posted at the very end, last payroll being June 30th, and the classified, last classified payroll is actually posted, or it's accrued as a liability early in July as part of the year-end close. Those are final numbers, and they're big numbers that can sway us one way or another. We also have encumbrances, things like utilities, where we do a requisition for the entire year, and we don't disencumber that until we close the books, which happens the end of June, it could even happen the beginning of July when the staff goes through each and every purchase order. So these are all things that, until your books are closed, it's really hard to determine what the actual calculation's going to be. Final expenditures are not recorded on these again until, after year-end. Also, one thing that could help us would be hiring new full-time faculty. But in order to do that, it's a year-long process. Tonight, I think you're going to be looking at lists, which will actually be for the '08-'09 year. We start that process in the winter for next year. So even if we did know, as we do now, we're struggling right now this year trying to prepare and need our calculation when I close the books this summer or next summer, but we can't hire full-time faculty at this time, it's not the way we operate. Reasons for the decline in calculation, some of this has to do with, as I mentioned earlier, account coding changes. The state chancellor's office requires the auditors review some of our coding when they come through into our annual audit. Some of these things that we've had to make changes in recent years are the reassigned time coded to non-instructional. It used to be coded as instructional, and we've had to change that, and that was effective in 2005-6. We also have some instructional aide recoding. The auditors did some testing last spring, and it was determined that some people that we had coded as instructional did not meet the definition through the estate accounting manual. So we looked at everybody. When we examined those people, we made corrections where it was required. That affected some of our calculation. We have increased reassigned time and stiping cost. Even a small percentage or small amount, because we are so close to 50% right now, has an impact in the calculation. We've had a reduction in the full-time faculty ratio in recent years. Some of this is due also, or due to, the full-time faculty obligation, which we exceeded by 24 in the fall of 2006. We thought we were fine with the number of full-time faculty we had on staff and that we were hiring because we hadn't met this obligation. And as I said earlier, one law works independent of the other, and just because you're fine with one law, doesn't mean that you're going to be fine with both laws. We also had an early retirement incentive in the spring of 2004. The result of this, we had cost savings, and the plan yielded lower faculty salaries. The new hires that came in, of course, started lower on the salary schedule than those that had retired and had been here a long time. And also, last but not least, is our startup of ATEP, which is unique to our district. We have a new site, and there's cost involved with that as well. Sometimes there's an old saying, you have to spend money to make money. You have to spend money to get the new site up and running. That's what we're experiencing with ATEP. Now we go on to what happens if we don't meet the 50% calculation? Well, first, our governing board, we can, may file an application for exemption. This filing deadline is always September the 15th. A copy of this application must be sent to the district's academic employees representative, the union, as well as the college academic senate. Here's the exemption process. Next, the governing board must hold a public hearing to determine the basis for exemption. And there are two items or two exemptions that we have to choose from. The first one is a serious hardship. This would probably be pretty difficult for us to prove and support because we are a basic aid district. The second option we have is that the district pays salaries of classroom instructors higher than the cohort. So in other words, the state would select five districts called cohorts, which would be similar to us, and compare our salaries to them and do a study and determine if we pay higher or not. Currently, as was earlier said, we are number four for average tenure-track salary paid in the state. After we determine the basis of exemption, we have to transmit those findings to the system office. And the deadline for this is December the 1st. An academic organization may submit a written statement opposing our application, they can also request a hearing by the system office. This has to be done within two months of, or two weeks, I'm sorry, of the public hearing or December 1st, whichever is later. The non-exempted deficiency, districts with a deficiency that is not completely exempted by the state Board of Governors are subject to Title V, Section 59213. In this case, the district has to submit a plan by June 30th of the fiscal year. This plan must say how the amount that is not exempted will be spent for salaries of classroom instructors. If we fail to provide this plan, the amount not exempted will be withheld from state allocations. Now, the question that is still out, and we don't have the answer, is because we are a basic aid district, how will this affect us? In conversations with the state, they've said they'll find a way, but we don't know at this time. I think that's in terms of- I think I can turn this over to you.
As the chancellor mentioned earlier, one of the action steps that have been taken is the establishment of the fifty percent law advisory council. That's a council of seventeen people, representing a wide representation of governance groups throughout the district. I chair that committee. The vice chancellor of Technology and Learning Services is on the committee, the vice chancellor of Human Resources, both college vice presidents of instruction. We have one vice president of Student Services. We have three directors of Fiscal Services, Beth for the district and Carol and DeVit for the two colleges. We have academic senate representatives. We have two academic senate representatives from each college, so a total of four. And we have two representatives from the Faculty Association, two representatives of CSEA. So, it's a group of wide representation. What we did, we've already had begun meeting, of course. The charge of the committee was to develop a plan for two thousand seven, two thousand eight by November the first. The committee has met and met that charge. So far, I'd like to say the committee's working extremely well. There's been, we've shared lots of information with the committees, with the committee, and the representatives from each of the colleges have gone back to their college and had very in-depth discussions at the college and developed recommendations that they thought were appropriate for their areas. So, and I believe that that list is in the agenda item, the recommendations. And then, there's another charge, and that's for us to continue working and come up with recommendations for budget development for two thousand eight, two thousand nine. So, the recommendations that the council has made, I want to emphasize, is based on a lot of information that they were given about our operation, and I think that you've seen some of that. Some ways that we can try to improve the percentage. Number one, we can hire additional full-time faculty. We can hire additional instructional aides. We can do a combination of the two. And a one percent increase would result by, a one percent increase in the percentage would come about if we added two point two-five or two and a quarter million dollars' worth of classroom instruction salaries and benefits. Another option is to reduce what's called the denominator expenses, or those expenses that are not classroom salaries and benefits. And if we were to do that, a one percent, it would result in one percent increase in the percentage if we reduced those expenditures by two point one-five million dollars. And then, the third is a combination of the two, and that's actually what yields the greatest benefit, and that's to reduce the denominator expenses and use that savings to hire additional faculty or in some way or another pay additional salaries for faculty. There's a note there at the bottom, just as information. If you want to know what kind of benefit do we get from hiring additional faculty, it averages about sixty thousand dollars. The reason for that is, is that what we're actually doing is replacing part-time faculty. So, you've already got in the calculation the cost of the part-time faculty. So, the additional amount going towards that two and a quarter, yeah, two and a quarter million is sixty thousand for each faculty that we hire. The last two points is that one outcome that is very obvious for those of us working with the financial part of the operation is every decision that's being made now has a discussion about how does this affect the fifty percent law. So, there's a very high awareness. Everyone's doing everything they can, and everyone is committed to resolving the problem. That's the end of what we were going to present, and if you have any questions or comments.
Very good. Yes, I think there are some questions and comments from the board. We'll start with trustee Williams.
Well, just to kick this thing off, two areas of thought, one being that when we hire faculty, and I've spoken to faculty about this, it's too bad that this law creates an incentive or a disincentive to hire counselors and librarians who serve students. Maybe you could comment on that. And then, my other thoughts are, all of the expenditures we're making on facilities with much-needed repairs to older buildings and building new facilities, such as the Performing Arts Center at Irvine Valley College. And the IVC Performing Arts Center was supposed to be matching money, but as we all know, the state committed to an X amount, but the cost of rebar and steel went sky high, or rebar, steel, and concrete went sky high. So, is it not true that the facilities' monies don't count in the fifty percent? They hurt us?
Those kinds of expenditures are discounted completely. They're not in the calculation.
Okay.
So, equipment or capital construction is not considered at all.
Okay. And then, comment if you will. I hate to say it, but I mean, if there's a disincentive to hire counselors and librarians, there's something wrong with the law, so.
Well, I guess it depends what the purpose of the law is. It's obvious, to me at least, that the purpose of the law is to ensure that a large percentage of the money that's spent in educational agencies are for classroom activity. And that means classroom faculty and aides that are in the classroom. It would be, it's a shame, with regard to the calculation, what the outcome will be, as you're suggesting. When you're close to the fifty percent and you're making a decision, you make a decision to hire a counselor, you've just hurt yourself. And we're far better off taking that money and investing it in classroom faculty.
So, all of our--
That's just the way it is.
So, the expenditures we make, of all the classified employees, then, the only ones that count are in classroom aides?
Classroom aides that are in the classroom under the direct direction of the faculty.
So, all the CSC members we hire are all excluded except classroom aides, campus safety, upgrading the safety equipment, the camera issue we just talked about. None of that counts under the fifty percent law?
The only thing that counts are classroom faculty benefits, instructional aide salaries and benefits. That's all it's about. Every other expenditure hurts in the calculation or else is discounted completely.
Okay. We've got several of the trustees wanting to address this item. We'll start with trustee Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yuri, I take it from the discussion that you find our colleague districts, Rancho Santiago and Coast, in the same predicament or of the same concern. Is it a concern statewide? Is it districts throughout, or is it unique to Orange County?
No, it's not unique to Orange County. I think that Vice Chancellor Sorbonne did a study or looked at some data, and I think it was about a third of the colleges have had difficulties in complying with the law at one time or another. There's a number of factors. There's no way to say this one particular component of our operation is what's at fault. But one thing is for sure. The state keeps piling on to colleges more and more mandates for services to be provided. And this isn't to say the services aren't good. We have matriculation. We have all sorts of kinds of services. And we're always looking for new ways that we can assist students, and many times, those aren't in classroom instruction. All of that hurts. We're trying to start a new program at ATEP. There's a lot of costs that are not direct classroom costs. That hurts also. So, it's an unfortunate thing. We're talking about maybe cutting our expenditures, not because we don't have any money, but cutting our expenditures just for the sake of complying with the law. So, that's probably what's going to happen a lot, particularly during this year, because we can't hire, use the money to hire additional faculty. We'll just be not spending money.
Well, to follow up, then, with that as a basis, I mean, that leads me to the conclusion that this is bad law, that this is hurtful law, that this is something that came to us statewide as a matter of the pressure of special interests and does a disservice to our district and to districts throughout the state of California. And maybe, Mr. President, if it is a problem for the districts throughout Orange County and throughout the state of California, we ought to, as a board, take the initiative and the leadership through our legislative task force to seek the cooperation of other districts for repeal of this, for change of this, for take the matter to Sacramento and to roll this back. If you didn't have this number to cope with, we wouldn't be having this discussion. And I think maybe we should consider agendizing that sort of change to offer to our colleague districts and to see if they would share with us, in a bipartisan and pro-educational, grounded initiative, an appeal and a change of what is bad law.
I think you make a terrific point, trustee Fuentes. Trustee Padberg.
Yes, I want to talk about, as I understand it, and I hope you'll correct me if I'm wrong, but the district expenses for salaries and how that impacts it, as well as what you've identified as Location Nine, which has all of our legal expenses as well as others. And I recognize that these are necessary to provide support to the two colleges, but those expenses are growing by leaps and bounds. It'll be another two million dollars on top of what it currently is next year, and that clearly can't help the formula. I'm talking about district salaries right now. And then, of course, the Location Nine, you'll have to kind of explain that to me. It sounds very mysterious, so.
It does, doesn't it? Why don't we talk first about the Location Nine?
Oh.
And then, we'll talk about the others. Location Nine is just a number that's in the account coding system to identify a certain group of expenditures. And what they are is expenditures that affect the entire organization. So, there's no way to take that expenditure and say, "That's IVCs, or that's saddlebacks, or that's the district office." It affects the entire operation. So, in our budgeting process, actually through the DRAC model, we just take all of those and count that as a district-wide expense. And your comment that it's growing is absolutely true. And there are costs in there. For instance, some of the costs are contributions to retiree medical benefit costs. That's going up. The cost of benefits are going up, and so are contributions are going up. The cost of insurance is in it.
And if I might, so that actually hurts us, is that what you're telling me? The cost of medical insurance for retirees actually--
Well, yeah, I mean, with regard only to this calculation. I mean, the fact that it's not good for this calculation doesn't mean it's not good to do.
I know, but we're trying to focus on understanding this calculation. So, just stick with me on that, okay?
Yeah, okay. Basically, every cost in the district that is not a classroom faculty cost hurts, everything. And you mentioned the district salaries.
Right.
That's correct. District salaries for district administration hurts. College staff for administration hurts. Everything outside of the classroom hurts. So, any place that the program is increased outside of the classroom hurts.
But if I may just, one follow-up. If district salary increases are at the rate of two million a year, we're in a real bad way. And that's what it is, from oh-six-oh-seven to seven-oh-eight. If you look at it, it says that. It's your own figures. It's what they say.
Anything else, trustee Padberg?
Yeah.
All right, trustee Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I'd like to begin by echoing some of what trustee Fuentes said about the perverse nature of this law and maybe some efforts to get it changed. I guess I'd be curious to hear from classified, either CSEA or any of the classified senates, what their take on this law might be, since, you know, a remedy or a potential remedy is cutting or reducing hires at the classified level, since those don't go to the numerator. I mean, it strikes me as mind-boggling that a district that is in a position financially that we are would find ourselves into that situation simply by, you know, in order to respond to a law like this. So, I'd be curious what your take would be on helping us try to get the law fixed, and then maybe a couple of other comments after I hear--
Mary Shannon, would you care to comment on this?
Thanks.
She can do it.
You know, we consider it unfortunate that it puts the board in the situation of wanting to put all of the money that we had hoped would go toward increasing classified staffing It is a sad, sad but true that the faculty could have nice, big raises, and it would be on the right side of the fraction. And anything that we were to request would inherently be on the wrong side of the fraction. I was sitting here thinking I need to take another history class, because I can't remember whether it was Wilson or Roosevelt or who that set a chicken in every pot, and this certainly says we need an instructional assistant in every classroom, because that's the only way we help the fraction. But I guess we just want to be part of a long-range solution to look at how we can best seek remedies to the problem, which we all agree to, that don't, that aren't chaotic for any one group. Because clearly, if there aren't any instructional or aren't any non-instructional staff, like admissions and records folks, financial aide, all of those, the secretaries who keep the curriculum going, that sort of thing, there aren't going to be any faculty in the classrooms, because there won't be any students there. So, we just all need to work together to figure out how to fix this.
Very good. Trustee Wagner, you want to continue?
If I may, well, actually, and thank you. I think you made one of the other points I was going to make. I mean, as I look at this, it's pretty clear that we had Professor Cosgrove earlier talk to us about the mechanics of hiring faculty. We had Ms. Muller talk to us about the mechanics of hiring faculty. And, you know, just out and out, hiring faculty wholesale to solve this problem is not a realistic solution, certainly not one that's going to happen anytime in a timely way. So, you know, I'm looking at things like reductions, unfortunately, in counselors and library staffs. But the point you just made, I thought, is a great one. You know, maybe we need to look at hiring instructional aides. You know, maybe not a chicken in every pot, but an instructional aide in every classroom. Or, you know, something, I mean, that may be hyperbole. I don't know. But we need to, you know, potentially look at that. And if we have to make some cuts in classified staff, maybe we can move those people into instructional aide roles in the classroom. You know, we hear about reducing reassigned time. I think it's got to be looked at. We know it's not a complete solution. But, I mean, I agree with you completely. We need to look at all of these, including, as I see, you know, principally, increasing instructional aides and decreasing some of that denominator.
Trustee Jay.
Yes, just a point here or two, because on the package that I believe all the trustees received when we came in, it shows the districts that are in trouble, and a couple of them are real Bush districts. I'm not saying that enough. I mean, you know, they're small rural districts, okay? Copper Mountain and Redwoods and so forth. But a couple of them are city districts, like Compton and Napa and so forth, which are pretty sizable cities. And they're having trouble and are obviously below the fifty percent compliance. And Beth went through what the steps you have to take if you end up there. But you'll notice a tremendous number of districts in this last column in two thousand five and six, which is the last year we have figures for, are very close to the fifty percent. They're fifty point one-five or fifty point two-six or-- They're 50.15 or 50.26 or something like that, and a lot of others, 51, 52. So it is a problem. I agree with Trustee Fuentes that the law is a difficult one and maybe should be changed. I do want to mention something about why it came about in the first place. I used to be in another state, and there in a unified district, and we had a 60% law where it had to be instruction. And as I recall, when I came to California, Gary, you can probably tell this, in the unified districts, is it still 60%?
No, it's 50.
It's 50 now in California, but in some states have a 60% law on instruction. And the reason for that, unfortunately, lies with boards in many cases, because they load up the staff with tremendous numbers of administrators and employees, but not instructors. So the classroom is short, and that's probably the reason why it came out. But what, we are where we are, and if a law changes within a year or two or three, that would be fine, but we've got to comply with the law as it is now. And I want to laud the committee for coming up, the advisory committee, on the 50% compliance. I want to laud them for their recommendations here. But what, so the work is half done. You've come up with recommendations. But I'd like to know what each one of these recommendations will actually, you know, go into the numerator and what will go into the denominator. For instance, take number 10, don't cancel classes with 10 and above at the discretion of the college vice presidents and so forth. I'd like to know, what does that save? Does it save $100,000 to the good or 4.7 million, as I recall? Wasn't that right, Gary, out of whack right now?
Well, in the calculation based solely on the budget, right.
Okay, so 4.7 million, if one of these things may not, for instance, if we go out and hire a whole bunch of instructors next year, what's it going to do this year? Zero, you know? And I'm not against that. I'm just saying that what we need to do is, what can we do right now in 2007 and 2008? And I know you guys are working on that, but we need numbers attached to these things. Is this going to give us $200,000 to the good, this a million, this nothing, this $50,000, and so forth? So that in a month now, we can look at this and say, okay, let's proceed with these things so we're, we meet the compliance this year, because this is the law we're going to have to live with, at least through June 30.
Right.
So that's where I'm coming from, yeah.
The recommendations, when they were made, was, the purpose was to give direction throughout the district of what we should be looking at and what we should be doing in order to bring us in compliance. And the committee didn't attempt to go down and identify individual expenditures to change, because that's better decided at the local level.
I'm not shooting at the committee. I'm just saying now, though, is the time.
Yes, right.
We need to look at bucks and actual numbers, of bucks and absolute dollars.
Yeah, that's going on right now.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Trustee Jay.
Thanks, you're on top of it.
There are a couple of trustees that wish to speak, but we do want to move the agenda along here, so I'll ask you to be brief, please. Trustee Wagner?
Thank you, and in recognition of time, I will be brief. I hear about the state will find a way to enforce this. I'd kind of like to know a little bit more, what is the enforcement mechanism? Number one, we may be able to get a waiver, and if we're not, let's find out what the state is going to do, because I would, you know, if 4 million is what solves the problem and the state is going to withhold 4 million from us, that may be better than a quick fix that is harder to undo, and so that we have the time to do this in the appropriate manner. I guess I'd like to know, what are the penalties?
And Trustee Padberg, did you want to make a quick...
Trustee Lang, I'm trying to get you to recognize the Academic Senate, who have been trying to get your attention, that's all.
Pardon me. I was not intentionally trying to ignore you. Yes, Mr. Williams?
I was trying to give it to Wendy, but... One of the things that I'd like to bring the trustee's attentions to, if I might, is on Exhibit A, page 1 of 2. And it's the top, it really is sort of the prelude or preamble, if you will. Although we must recommend changes in pursuit of a satisfactory classroom instruction expense ratio, we must always keep foremost in mind consistency with the mission goals and strategic plans of each unit, that means of Saddleback College, of IVC, and ATAP, and consider each decision's long-term impact on students. And that was a component that the entire committee endorsed. And at Saddleback, and we've had multiple conversations in a lot of different venues at the public and, excuse me, on the Planning and Budget Committee, this has been a very discussed and passionate topic, and same thing at the Academic Senate. And one of the things is that I'd like to bring your attention to, and I don't know if you have a copy of it, but I'd like to give you a copy if I can, is that we have a strategic plan, and we divide it into four groups. In each of these strategic plans, one of our most important planned, and every component of these groups, it was student services, institutional effectiveness. I'm trying to remember what the other planning processes were off the top of my head, I can't...
Campus environment.
Oh, campus environment, and what else?
Enrollment management.
Enrollment management. And each of those components, or at least three of four of those components, hiring faculty was a top desire of our college. However, having said that, it was the manner in which we would hire and the processes of hiring. And Dr. Cosgrove spoke to it briefly. He said, "We want to hire faculty. It's a wonderful thing to do, it's very exciting." But that there are multiple issues associated with just doing a massive hiring of faculty, and some of the concerns that, I don't know that you know, but I'd like to share with you, is that we're looking at...
Please be brief.
I'm trying to. Is that if we hire 30 faculty, we at least need 15 offices. We don't have 15 offices. It assumes that we have the instructional supplies. It assumes that we have the instructional aides. It assumes that we have the tenured review committees. And all of this massive planning that we've done at hiring four or five faculty a year has now been set aside for a quick, pardon the expression, knee-jerk fix. And I think what, Trustee Wagner, again, I can't believe it, you know, I'm agreeing with you, here we go, that we might want to just take a look at what the penalty is.
One of this needs to be rethought.
Yeah, you know, we need to be careful about this.
Thank you, President.
But that's, but that's a big concern, is that we've set aside the Saddleback College strategic plan by hiring 30 faculty. We never wanted to do it. To do it in one year really doesn't meet our strategic planning processes. Thank you.
Thank you. President Gabriella, did you also want to make a comment or two, but please be brief?
Yeah, well, I just want to mention that at both of the colleges for '06, '07, and '07, '08, both of our percentages at the colleges have been healthy. So in '06, '07, IVC was at 54%, and Saddleback was at 57%. We've dropped a little bit. The full-time faculty hiring will help, but I think we've got to be careful in cutting the colleges, because the colleges are our only numerator area. And so when we cut at the college level, we're actually bleeding the patient. So we've got to be very careful that we don't, you know, bleed the patient to death.
Throw the baby out with the bathwater.
Whatever metaphor, right. But we've got to be careful and keep the colleges healthy, because that's what allows the board to spend at ATAP and the board to spend at the district level.
Thank you, and I'll have the Chancellor, may I, to make a few comments to wrap up the discussion.
Thank you. Yes, we agree through this discussion. This discussion has been extremely helpful. Let me say that, as I said at the outset, that we really need to take a comprehensive approach in addressing this, including hiring more full-time faculty, also hiring more instructional aides. One of the things that we are in the process of doing is converting some of the classified positions, as appropriate, into instructional aide positions, because the bulk of the work is being done assisting faculty in the classroom. So HR is geared to do that. We are in the process of identifying, as Trustee Jay has mentioned, a specific list of things that we need to do, and we have, we're almost 70 to 80% there in terms of defining our target and also the expenditures that we need to cut out for this year, so that the numerator will be larger than the denominator. I agree with Trustee Fuentes and Trustee Wagner that Orange County Legislative Task Force should take up this matter and pursue the repeal of the law, and they will also be working with our legislative advocate in Sacramento, Arnold Bray, in this regard. In terms of the waiver process and so forth, as requested, we'll continue to gather information on that. It goes without saying that the administration will be...
Working on the office space.
Office space.
That was a sign to wrap things up.
Office space situation. Anyway, we are committed to addressing the problem, and this discussion has been very useful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That will conclude the discussion on this item tonight, and we're going to move on. There is one other resource person I noticed that we've got in the audience, so I do want to tackle the agenda or the item on this, and it's 5.4, which is the receipt of our audit report. And what I will do is ask first if there's a motion to accept for review and study the annual audit report.
Oh.
Okay? All right, moved and seconded. Any questions? Oh, yes, okay.
Page of order.
Yes.
We're less, almost 10 minutes away from our stopping time. I'd like to make a motion that we extend it by 30 minutes, if we need it.
I would like to, we've got some items, consent calendar and other. I would prefer an extension of up to an hour.
An hour?
Yes.
Okay. You may amend my motion, that's fine.
All right, is there a second to that? Okay.
Second.
Move, no, no, it was moved and seconded.
No, no, he seconded admirers.
By Trustee Milchuker. So we will take a vote on that item, and I don't see my screen, oh, here we go, all right. So, all right, you're, that case, we'll look at another motion. Trustees Milchuker and Williams. Trustees Milchuker and Williams. All right, that passes on a four to three vote. Very good. So again, we are on acceptance of the district audit report for review and study, and I think it's been moved and seconded. Everybody received a copy of the report we've got with us today. Gemma Tocinski, how did I do with that one?
You did great.
Okay.
You did awesome.
Terrific. Jenna, did you want to make any very brief comments regarding this item?
Um, yes, very brief.
Okay.
Very brief. We, of course, have audited the financial information of the district. We've issued an unqualified opinion. You're going to find that on the first two pages of the report immediately following the table of contents. Unqualified opinion's the best opinion we can render, says that financial statements are materially stated, and so we're always happy to be able to do that. There were two adjustments that you'll find on page 35 of the report, one having to do with the difference between internal and external reporting requirements for property tax revenue, and another minor difference in timing associated with the reimbursement, the recognition of reimbursement for salaries and benefits paid for associated student government. The report, it meets the governmental accounting standards, and so it is a different format than what is used internally. In addition to the financial activity of the district, the report also consolidates your four foundations. You're going to find that on the component unit column. Two of the foundations also issue separate reports, and both IVC and Saddleback, you can get copies of those reports if you'd like them directly from those foundations. I always recommend that when you review the financials, that you look at the footnotes as well. They're going to give you all the information about the policies and the procedures used in developing the financial information, so it's very important to read those. In addition, I will point out that there were no findings in the current year related to internal controls or compliance. 50% law and all, so that's good. And that we do look, we're required to look at the prior year findings and make recommendations or, you know, comments in terms of whether they were implemented or not. There were four findings last year, all of them were implemented. The district implemented either the procedures or implemented whatever they need to be in compliance for those requirements. That's very quick overview. I want to thank Beth and her office, the staff. We work with a lot of people throughout the district, not just the financial folks. We visit financial aid, we visit different program people, we visit the foundation folks, and we do appreciate everybody's cooperation during the process so that we can get this job done and issue our report. And with that, if you've got any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Tocinski. First of all, let me thank you for your service to our district. Also, thank our Deputy Chancellor, Gary Portner, Beth Mueller, and all the other people in fiscal services that obviously did such a terrific job that led to a great result. I also want to thank those members of our board that served on the Audit Committee for the district, which included Trustees Wagner, Milchuker, and Williams. And Deputy Chancellor Portner, were there any comments that you wish to make before we vote on this item?
Yeah, just real quickly, I wanted to mention that audit reports at the board level each year happen very quickly. Usually, they don't last very long, and the impression might be given that the board, you know, doesn't spend time with it. Well, and I wanted to make it clear, as you just mentioned, three trustees are on a subcommittee of the board, and that subcommittee meets with the auditors twice and has in-depth discussions with them. At the beginning of the audit, there's an opportunity for board members to give input to the auditor about any concerns that they may have. At the end of the audit, the auditors have a direct communication with the three board members. There's plenty of opportunity to ask questions and try to determine if there's any responsibilities board members may have as a result of the findings. And also, going along with you said, you know, this is a very clean audit report, and Beth and Davit and Carol deserve our appreciation.
Absolutely. Thank you. And let me recognize Trustee Wagner.
Well, let me just say, you've heard it from President Lang, but from the board level and as a participant in those Audit Committee meetings, I want to thank you, Gemma, and your staff. It's been thoroughly professional and very detailed. I think you guys have done an absolutely wonderful job, and it's just truly been a pleasure working with you. I've worked with a lot of auditors over the years, and you guys have been quite good to work with. And our staff, Gary, Beth, Davit, Carol, again, as a board member, just let me say, we recognize the hard work and really do appreciate what you've done to help get us this clean audit. I think this is the first one where there have been no findings. Every year, there are findings. Every year, we go back to the component units or whoever, generally get very prompt results, and especially this year, to have, you know, no findings is really just hats off to fiscal leadership throughout the district. You folks and your staff have done a wonderful job. So on behalf of the board and a member of the Audit Committee, thank you all.
Trustee Williams?
Well, I'll echo what Trustee Wagner said. It's been a pleasure. Once again, it's been a long time, five, six, seven years I've been on the Audit Committee, and Trustee Milchuker's been there right with me at each meeting. So once again, thank you, and I look forward to working with you next year. I believe you are one more, one more year on the contract, I believe, but I look forward to working with you.
I believe we're going to be presenting a contract proposal.
Oh, okay. But anyway, it's been a pleasure to work with you.
Extend.
And to Gary and the staff, you know, what this tells me is each year, there is something minor. Our people are listening and they're learning, and they're not making the same mistakes over again, is what I've noticed, so that's a good thing.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, let's vote on item 5.4. And that is approved unanimously. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Yes, at this point, we, does anybody need to take a brief break? All right, very good. Then we will take a 10-minute break. Please be back at 9:06.
I should be writing about 62 minutes down. I think that once we get through this holiday period, we're going to take a day to sit down with the old office, even if it's just you and me. We've got to shout some options, some information. I'm also thinking about emailing Vicki and asking her if she could go to lunch with us. We could have a lunch if she'll meet us for lunch and explain some of the options that we would have, because I want to be a host of this proposal and sort of roughly cost it out, and I'm just, and to give the E-Board some choices to make, so that it has a chance of flying. I've got to go back up and check on them and grab my water bottle that I left somewhere.
I'm going, hurry back.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah. As soon as it has a trick... As soon as it has a trickle to you, yes.
No.
It was like the gossip for like the last like three months.
Yeah, the area has passed. I heard you say the whole time, all the different areas that were enumerated. Why is it when it comes to solving the problem, the early area was brought up with the class?
Yeah, I did. This is the one.
Is everyone here listening?
Yes.
Next to the number 16.
Or 17.
Because.
All right.
Actually, this is awful.
And I was ignoring.
What a boss.
HR is doing.
Oh, well, yeah.
Looking at it, and it's one more of these.
One more.
Little picture of it.
I have every interest.
And I have not many way that I will.
Okay.
So I don't know.
The consent calendar, I believe we voted on the regular consent calendar items and are ready to deal with those items that have been pulled from the consent calendar. And we'll start with 4.4, which is Irvine Valley College Performing Arts Center. And I think trustee Padberg, you wanted to address this item.
Yes, I did. Thank you. You know, I'm, whoops, for tearing up the desk here. I, obviously, we're all very pleased with the opening of this theater, and I'm wondering when the checkbook and the red ink is going to stop, because it seems never to. We have 32 million already approved in this, and there's constantly another 20,000. I thought we accepted the final contract and that there should be no more expenses other than special things that the foundation is helping us raise, but not out of the budget.
Okay. Let me call on Brandy Delena to perhaps address the status of this project.
Hello.
So as far as your question is concerned, we have still one outstanding amount for
a contractor, that would be Herc Edwards. We have withheld some funds from their final payment because of some outstanding issues that we haven't yet resolved. The same kind of thing happened with Zuser, who is on your board agenda item this evening. The Zuser contract previously had been approved for a credit to their account, or we would get money back from them, to the tune of about $39,000. Zuser, when they saw that that was the action that had been taken, determined that there were a number of other items that needed to be resolved. We went to claim, well, actually, we avoided claim by going to a mitigation situation. They wanted approximately 80,000, so the 20 that you see there is actually what I consider to be a very good settlement for the district.
Very good. Deputy chancellor Portner, was there anything else you wanted to add to this item at all?
I'll ask Brandy to help me, but my recollection is that this is not in addition to the budget.
That's correct.
Within the budget that we already have.
Okay, it would be good to have that spelled out somewhere in these items if that's the case. I don't really see it. If it is, point it out to me.
Under the.
Yeah, it's in the last paragraph under status. And I did hear an approval from trustee, a motion for approval from trustee Williams. Okay, moved and seconded. Seeing no other questions, let's vote on this item. Trustee Williams, item is approved unanimously. Next is item 4.7, which is a resolution to enter into an energy service agreement in a public hearing on agreements that affect Saddleback College. Move approval. Okay, moved and seconded. Trustee Padberg, again, did you wish to speak to this item?
Yes, I have some questions about this particular energy company and Saddleback. I know that when we put in our special savings and cogeneration system, the Semper Energy was continuing to charge us penalties because we weren't purchasing at the rate we had previously. And so I'm curious about where that is and how our overruns are beyond being charged for what we actually use. And then, obviously, this will come back in the form of a public hearing. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. We'll be coming back in December for the public hearing, and we'll speak to your questions at that time.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, has, I believe we've had a motion for, motion seconded and approved.
Yeah, I had a comment.
Oh, yes. Sorry, trustee Jay. You did.
I noticed that this is a resolution. However, a resolution can be put on the consent calendar. Is that the case, or we don't all?
That is the case, and I've just checked the protocol on that.
Okay, thanks.
And where it's on this consent calendar, we don't need to go with a voice vote. However.
Thanks.
Because it's been pulled off the consent calendar, I am going to have Grace call the roll on this.
Okay.
Trustee Fuentes?
Aye.
Trustee Jay?
Aye.
Aye.
Trustee Milchuker?
Aye.
Trustee Padberg?
Aye.
Trustee Wagner?
Aye.
Trustee Williams?
Aye.
Student trustee Rayna.
Okay, very good. With that, we will move to item 4.9, which is authorization to send public agency notices regarding the possible lease of the district's ATIP property, and authorization to send and publish public notices of public hearing regarding the waiver request. And again, trustee Padberg, I'll record.
Yes, I did read the chancellor's update on this item, and it is an involved process that we're seeking to get around and not have to go through in order to do the lease of some of the property at ATIP. I think that it's important that the public be made aware when we are going around normal procedures that the state has in place, the reason for doing that. And I would like the chancellor to outline that as to why this recommendation has come forth this way.
Actually, it's the deputy chancellor that I'll call on with respect to this item.
Yes, in our discussions with Camelot, and we're having, probably the discussions have to do with the term, you can't hear anything?
Doesn't sound like it's. Okay. Going. Yeah, does that help? No?
No. It tells me that, don't worry about it, just keep speaking, keep talking.
Okay, all right. We're not listening anyway.
Yeah, I'm listening.
One of the important parts of the agreement will be the term of the agreement. In the code sections dealing with public schools, there's a limit to the number of years that we can enter into a lease, unless that requirement is waived by the Board of Governors, which is a legal process. It's one that districts do. They waive various code sections. And so we're beginning to work now. We don't know that in fact we're going to want to do that, but if we wait until the end, it takes too darn long to do this, and it would get in the way of moving forward. So we're just putting this in place, getting ready in case we need it.
Okay, very good. Was there a motion for approval on this item? I don't recall.
So moved.
Okay, moved. Is there a second? All right, moved and seconded. Let's vote on this item. And that's approved unanimously. That takes us over to item 5.3, which are the colleges' faculty hiring lists for 2008, 2009 for approval.
Move approval.
Okay, moved and seconded. I think we've got several trustees that wish to speak to this item, but let's first start with the chancellor.
Thank you. Let me just clarify this agenda item a bit. Overall, we are trying to identify 45 positions for advertising, out of which we hope to fill 40, because sometime, we always advertise a few extra positions because sometimes the pool is not large enough or diverse enough and so forth. So in order to accommodate, we hope to identify and advertise 45 positions. Having said that, Irvine Valley College has listed 15 positions, and Saddleback College has provided two lists, and that's exactly what I would like to clarify. Their initial list consists of 22 positions, and they needed to identify eight more positions. As part of this process of identifying eight additional positions, the administration, working with the academic senate, did not have sufficient time to conclude identifying the remaining eight positions out of some 32 positions. So what we decided to do was to bring, in addition to the 22 positions, all 32 positions, and this way, we wouldn't need to come back one more time at the December meeting for action, and this way the administration and the academic senate can continue to work together and identify the remaining eight positions, as well as continue the prioritization process. So this will help us expedite the posting of some 45 positions.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Wagner?
Well, a couple of things. One.
Did you say 45 or 35? 45.
Other we want to advertise.
Oh, I did, but, yeah, we got, we got, is it the replacement page? Or is it the same thing just signed?
It's the same thing just signed.
Okay, so it's 15 here and 21 from Saddleback, which isn't 45.
36.
36, yeah.
And so I'm wondering where the other positions are. But more importantly, when I see, at least on the Saddleback list, item three or number three, a learning disability counselor, or in the counseling and special programs, and then down at 17, a distance education librarian, seems to me those don't help us with our 50 percent law. So, you know, I'm curious why they're on here, what the process was, the decision to go ahead and try to make these hires, given the discussion we had just earlier today. So, you know, I got a lot of questions about this, and then, of course, the overarching consideration is, are we just hiring to satisfy the 50 percent law, or are we, you know, doing this with some sort of thought-out plan in place? So I'd be curious to hear the answers to those, but as it stands, I'd be inclined to ask if this come back to us a little bit later with some of these issues addressed.
I think we can respond to some of these questions. Let me just make sure that, first of all, everybody has a list of 15 positions for IVC on your agenda. Then, secondly, you have an initial list of, I believe, is it 21 or 22? 21 positions. Okay.
I've got 21.
I've got one that says 22 and one that says 21.
Okay. Let me also, yeah, let me also mention that a smaller list that you see, 21 or 22, that has already gone through the process. The longer list that you see, we are trying to identify some remaining positions to come up with 30 altogether, trustee Wagner from Saddleback. And in the longer list, I believe that's where you see counselors, counseling positions, and.
The shorter list.
Oh, in the shorter list. In either case, I think I'm going to call upon President McCullough to respond to that. Some counseling positions are mostly teaching positions, so if they are teaching counseling positions, then they're okay, because they're in the classroom. However, if they are counseling or librarian positions in the longer list, I'm sure that the process will yield no such position on the final list that we will advertise. With that, I'm going to call upon President McCullough.
Yes, the ones that are on the shorter list are instructional positions.
Time out, time out. You're talking shorter list and longer list, and some of us only have one list.
Well, I believe we provided you the longer list through the, along with the chancellor's update.
Yeah, well, you provided new pages.
Yes.
That leaving why he doesn't have a list that you're talking about.
Where did you get, when did you send us new pages?
Well, it was in our package.
Here, here's my list.
So do you want?
5.3.
All right, so are you looking for approval for both lists?
Yes.
Wow. Good luck.
Okay. I'm going to ask a question myself here, and that is, I thought I heard academic senate president Dominguez say earlier that this was, no, you. That this was not something that the faculty would have necessarily endorsed, but I'm looking at these lists, and I'm seeing that they're both signed by the academic senate president, not you. So maybe I can, and I know you wanted to speak, so perhaps you can answer my question and also make whatever comments that you are interested in.
Absolutely. To answer your first question, yes, we did sign it. Maybe I could help trustee Wagner. One exhibit is exhibit A1, and then the second exhibit is exhibit A2. And exhibit A1 deals with replacement faculty, which we decided we would do at the college level, plus that we would each put a chicken in every pot or a new faculty member in every division, and we would hire a new faculty member. And we would wait to see, now here comes the rub, we would wait to see what number the district offices gave us so that we would know our hiring responsibility. Now, the number 45 faculty district-wide was given to us, but I think a question that needs to be answered is, where did that number come from? What's the data that drove the desire or the requirement that IVC must hire 15 full-time faculty and Saddleback must hire two-thirds more? We must hire 30 full-time faculty and be prepared to hire even more full-time faculty. That's our concern. So that's, so ultimately, on exhibit A2, we just said, okay, all the divisions, just send us your wish list, we'll get a big blessing, and then we'll determine exactly how much money we have to hire. And that's what exhibit A2 is about. But I can't, I won't respond to the logic of that, but anyway, that was the process that was given to us. But our concern is, what was, because I haven't received this answer, what is the data that drove the number 45? Normally, it's always to meet our state mandated requirement, but we're so far above that. Why are we doing that now?
The deputy chancellor is just itching to ask your question.
Oh, thank you, Gary.
Answer your question.
I don't think the microphone worked.
Do you want mine?
My recollection is that the decision did revolve around the 50 percent law, and it was an estimate that we made of what would it, how many faculty would we have to hire in order to move it up, the percentage up 1 percent?
And the second part of the answer, if I may, is that we generally hire full-time faculty members between the two colleges on a ratio of two to one. So that's why we came up with the number of, if we had 15 positions from Irvine Valley College, and we are seeking 30 positions from Saddleback College, that gives us a total of 45 positions to advertise, and if we were to hire about 40 positions, that'll increase our 50 percent calculation by 1 percent. That's the logic that was discussed in the executive staff meetings.
There you have it. Okay, trustee Padberg?
Well, I'm simply trying to understand the two exhibits. Exhibit A2, I guess, is the one that we're really going to be working with and approving if we approve it. Is that correct? A2 has four counselors opposed to A1 that has two counselors on the list, and I don't know if these are the kind of counselors that count or not. Maybe we need to color-code them or something.
I will let President McCullough respond to the counseling positions, but in terms of the board action, we are seeking board action on A1, A2, both the lists of Saddleback College, plus the IVC list.
Well, I, I don't understand that. Then you're, you're going to, there's thirty-six, on my A2, there are thirty-two positions. On my A1, there are twenty-two positions. So you want to approve all of those positions? Both A1 and both A2?
I'll let President McCullough respond to this.
The listing on A1 is the replacement positions and the new positions that we had decided that the college was going to go for. We were not in a position to, at least at the beginning of the discussions, to hire thirty individuals, and that's why we have two lists, because we didn't anticipate that we were going to hire that many. And so we, we have on the A1 list, the replacement positions for those who have already retired or left.
I see.
With new faculty that have been through the process of prioritization, through the normal and usual process of the college. So the ones that are on the A, the A1 list, those are all going to be, are sent out for hiring, let's, let me put it that way, going to be advertised for hiring. The counseling positions on there are for instruction positions, and the, the only exception to that would be in the learning disability, which I think is sixty percent assessment for DSP and S, and forty percent instruction, but we have to have the assessment in place so we can have the students for instruction, otherwise we don't have the students in that particular program. The A2 list is sort of a wish list at this point. It has not been prioritized through the normal process, and some of those positions are, yes, generals counselor positions, but they will be dealt with with the prioritization committee.
Okay, so you want both lists approved, essentially?
Yeah, normally, what we've done in the past is we've, we've brought more than what we would hire in any given year to the board, and the board approves that list, and then from that list, based on the budget, we prioritize so many positions and then offer them. So this is not unusual, let's say, in that sense.
Okay.
Thank you. Trustee Williams.
Okay. Just a quick question. Earlier tonight, I heard a number that we have two-hundred-and-ten or two-hundred-and-fifteen full-time faculty district-wide. I thought we were over three-hundred.
Gary, do you have, or Vice Chancellor King, do you have the information on full-time faculty?
Aren't we over three-hundred?
Yeah, yeah, both colleges together is over three-hundred.
That was just at Saddleback.
Okay, okay. So this would put us in the mid-three-hundreds then, if we hire most of these? Okay, that's all.
Trustee Fontas.
To the chancellor, I want to ask, if any of this decision is driven in its inception by the fifty percent law and are attempting to cope with that, I feel that this evening, we had a good discussion, and that a month from now, we're going to have a better and clearer grasp of that issue, and maybe even be taking some action to address that. And I want to know, does it create a crisis of any kind for us to put this off for a month, this decision?
Yes, it does, because typically, different community college districts, as well as other institutions of higher education, tend to put their ads in the Chronicle of Higher Education and other places about this time. And the hiring process begins in earnest in February, March, April timeframe, so if we don't start now, we do tend to lose out on some good candidates. Now, by advertising for this many positions, let's say, we find, based on the fifty percent calculation picture, two months from now, or three months from now, that we don't need to hire, let's say, forty positions, we need to hire only thirty-five positions. Certainly, we can control that during the spring semester time. I know it's a difficult decision to make then, as it is now, but we need to get out early in terms of advertising the positions to draw up a good pool.
Thank you. Okay. Trustee Melchiker.
I, I, we, I do have the two lists on the updated agenda that were sent by, by email that was online, and in the old agenda, there's only one list. I just want to clarify that. The, the, I'd like to hear from both academic senate presidents about this issue, because they're, we, we utilize them for advice when we deal with academic issues, like academic issues in the classroom, such as hiring professors. I'm all in favor of hiring professors. I think that's, certainly, we need to hire more full-time professors, but I think we have to do it in a, in a very careful and thoughtful way. When we hire a new professor at, at either of our districts, it's well over a million-dollar investment, and we're hiring this professor for twenty years, and it's, it's the future of our college. These are the people that will be on the academic centers, and they'll be governing, governing our colleges long after we're gone. So we have to proceed cautiously and carefully, and, you know, we, we offer a, a very good salary, and I'm all in favor of that, because we attract the best professors, and, and this is a great place to live, housing, housing costs are extraordinary, but we want to get the best professors that we can for, for our dollars, so that we can serve our students well in, in future years. And we have to do the process thoughtfully and carefully. And I, I'd like to hear from the academic senate presidents about the list and how, how they feel about how to proceed academically with, with this list and with this procedure. Thank you.
Yes, academic senate president Gabriella.
At Irvine Valley College, we developed our hiring priority list in the spring, prior to bringing it to you in the, in October. So our list was developed last spring, and we did develop fifteen positions. On our original list that was developed last spring, we did have a librarian, and as a result of the fifty percent issues that have arisen just recently, we recalculated the list and omitted the librarian from the list that will be submitted to you. They're still on our list, and once we get right side up on the fifty percent law, then we figure we can hire librarians and counselors as well. So our list does not include any of those positions. Our college is down twelve replacement faculty, and over a base of a hundred, which we normally have a hundred full-time faculty, we're down twelve. So it's starting to hurt our program, so these are replacement positions mostly that are needed at Irvine Valley College. Davit and Glenn and Craig worked very hard, and they filled me in on all the details, and we think the college can afford the fifteen positions. And if I'm wrong, Glenn, I'm sorry. But it is tight, it's going to be very tight, because it has to come out of the college budget. If I'm wrong, Glenn, feel free.
Great, thank, thank you. Trustee Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I tend to think that this is, or at least the longer lists are being driven by the fifty percent law, and think that, you know, trustee Fontas is right, hopefully, at some point, there will be other ways of either dealing with this problem or, or solving this problem than wholesale hiring at this point. So, you know, I appreciate IVC needs fifteen replacement positions. I understand Saddleback's first list, or its shorter list, maybe that is something that needs some attention right now, but in, in good conscience, I'm not sure I can see going out and doing forty-five or whatever the numbers are, thirty-five whole new positions, just to respond to sort of a crisis that is, maybe not a crisis, depending on what we see, what the ramifications are or not. So I can see my way clear to voting for the original lists, certainly not any of the new lists. And then I have another question about the new, about the original lists. I see all of these positions are tenure-track, and then there's a box here that can be checked for temporary. And I'm wondering, why are they all tenure-track? Do we want to do something other than tenure-track to have more flexibility at some later date when this issue has resolved itself? So I want to throw that out as just, I mean, I don't know the answer to that.
Who would...
Let me try this. I think, well, based on the responses that we have heard, that it seems that most of the positions on both college campuses are replacement positions. First of all, we need to come up to the same level that we used to be at, and then we are trying to hire some new positions. And, 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 and so you can see that out of forty positions that we are going to try to fill, a good number of those positions are replacement positions, and hiring some additional ones should put us over the fifty percent for next year. Secondly, with respect to tenure-track, again, most of these positions, replacement positions, were tenure-track positions, and if we are going to deal with this fifty percent situation on a long-term basis, then we do need to hire additional full-time faculty members. Like earlier, Beth Muller mentioned, this is a moving target, and we are trying to deal with it. Just doing the replacement will not be enough. I think we will need some additional full-time faculty members.
Okay. We've got several trustees that still wish to speak to this item, but I'll ask you again to be brief, so that we can move forward with this. Trustee Padberg.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve all of the replacement positions tonight, and that we bring back the new positions to the December meeting. Will that create a burden first, before I make that motion?
Well, it creates a burden in the sense that we are not being very cost-effective in advertising the positions, because we'll be paying for some ads in various places, and it's better that we go out the barn with all the positions that we need to advertise, we advertise them beginning with this time, because we will be at a disadvantage in drawing a good, strong pool longer we wait.
Trustee Jay, again, please be brief.
Yeah, my only comment is that we need to approve both lists right now, because of the fact that the best candidates will disappear quickest, most quickly, and we should do it now. It's a tremendous advantage to start to advertise before the turn of the year, instead of waiting till February, March, and then you end up getting the last ones on the list.
Would you like to make that as a motion, trustee?
Yeah, I, I make a motion that we approve both lists.
Is there a second? Yes, moved and seconded. All right, there's still a couple trustees that wish to speak, and I'll ask you to be brief. Trustee Melchiker.
My, my question is, I am ready to approve the fifteen people on the IVC list, so they could go out and advertise, and I think I'm ready to approve the, the first list that was, that was put together with, with academic senate approval, and in a thoughtful way, for Saddleback College. I'm, I'm really not sure about the second list, because I, it seems that that was just put together, I hate to say willy-nilly, because that's not a very intelligent sounding word, but, but just, just thrown together and, and given to us, and I want to make sure that, that these lists are produced thoughtfully. So I, I guess I would ask the academic senate presidents and the college presidents and the chancellor, how would it be if we approve List A, the first list from Saddleback College, and the list from Irvine Valley College, and not approve the second list from Saddleback College? That's my question.
President McCullough, would you like to make some additional comment on this?
Well, again, as the, as the chancellor said, that we would miss out on the, the advertisement if we brought it back next month in December, but out of the thirty-two, that still has to be prioritized to get eight or nine new positions, and the prioritization committee is actually needing to do exactly that. So I'm not, I'm not sure what...
Yeah, that's helpful, because if we, if we do approve the positions, and then that will give the, the colleges the opportunity to go forward and determine which of those extra positions are number one on, on their lists, and ranked, and then the colleges would have the ability to move forward and advertise for the positions that they feel they're, they're number one on the priority, so that would make sense. Also, I, there is some, if you're not sure if you can fill the position or not, it may be, I don't know if it's considered immoral, but it, it's almost better to advertise for it and, and then decide last minute, you need to fill that position, and, and you really can't attract somebody very good. So do the colleges feel that way also?
Yes, I think so.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Okay, very good. Trustee Williams.
Well, I'd urge my fellow board members to approve the agenda item as presented, and let our chancellor raid over this process with the presidents, and make the appropriate recommendations for hire. The agenda item reads, approve the announcement of and recruitment for, and let him make that determination of what actually goes out. We need to give him that flexibility.
Trustee Jay, do you have anything new to add to this?
No, I, I think what I'm saying is that we approve all lists, and then give the chancellor some flexibility.
Very good.
And I like that, so...
Let's proceed to vote on this item. Item is approved with one no vote from trustee Wagner. All right, very good. That, next item that, for discussion is 5.5, which is a consultant contract for student success research. Do I have a motion for approval?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any questions regarding this item? Let's vote on this item. And that is approved unanimously. Next item for consideration is 5.6, which are academic personnel actions. Let me first call on our vice chancellor for human resources and ask if there are any changes to this item.
Yes, I have one change. It's on page four of five, item I, one, Charles Harrison. The effective resignation date should be May 31st, not May 23rd, and the effective retirement date should be June 1st, not May 24th.
Okay, very good. With that change, do I have a motion for approval?
Uh-oh.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any questions? If not, let's vote. And that item is approved with one no vote from trustee Wagner. Next item is 5.7, which are classified personnel actions. Again, I'll call on our vice chancellor for human resources, Bob King. Any changes to this item?
Yes, there are three changes to the item. The first change is on page three of six, item B1A, Carol Kennedy. It should be disclosed that Carol Kennedy is the wife of Donald Linbo, Senior Fiscal and Veteran Specialist, Office of College Fiscal Services at Saddleback. And on that same page, the next item, item B, Sonia Wish, it should be disclosed that she is the daughter of Dennis Wish, Irrigation Systems Specialist, Office of Fiscal Plant, Saddleback. And then the final change is on page four, item C5, Desiree Ortiz. In the middle of the item, where it gives the position number, position number 3773, it should say, classified bargaining unit, salary range 128, step one, and also disclose that she is the daughter of Tony Curial, warehouse worker, delivery driver, Office of Administrative and Business Systems District, and niece of Joe Curial, custodian, Office of Fiscal Plant, IVC.
Okay, very good. With those changes, is there a motion for approval?
Uh-oh.
Is there a second?
Sure.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any questions? Let's vote on this item. Trustee Melchiker. Okay, item is...
I didn't mean to...
Okay, we, we will record your vote, trustee Padberg, as a yes vote, which makes it a unanimous decision. Next item is 7.1. Thank you. 7.1 deals with, is an information item here regarding Saddleback and Irvine Valley Colleges' 2006-07 release time and/or stipends, which is here for information. Any comments regarding 7.1? Trustee Padberg.
I, I think that we need to evaluate our... I think that we need to evaluate our formula that we are using for release time. We had set this back when we were on the state financial watch list, and I think that we should do some further study about maybe adjusting that, if not annually, every three to four years, it could be adjusted up or down, but we haven't visited this for some time, and I think it's time that we do look at it in detail.
Good point. Yes, I think the other, the other comment that I would make about this item is that I know that we are providing release time to several employees that are serving at the state level, and I don't feel that those should count against the individual colleges in terms of evaluating their percentage of release time either. I think that's a commitment, effectively doing our civil duty on behalf of the community college district. So, I would make that, I would offer that, that point as well. Any other comments? Yes, Trustee Jay.
You made my point, President Lang. Thank you. Very good. Trustee Patberg.
Well, I would hope that this would come back in some form, and then, also, academic senate president has...
Oh, I'm sorry, academic senate president Gabriella.
She's facing us so she can see us easier. But, thank you for pointing out the reassigned time that's going for statewide causes shouldn't count against the specific college. But, also, I want to point out that this rule was put forward by the board in 1999, and in 1999, we didn't have student learning outcomes, we didn't have program review, we didn't have a lot of these unfunded state mandates that we now have. And I'd also like to point out that our college presidents are being evaluated by whether or not they hit this board rule, and it's not really fair to our college presidents, because they have to get SLOs done, otherwise, our accreditation suffers. We also have to have an accreditation co-chair. So, it's not a real fair evaluative tool when this hasn't been reevaluated since 1999. My daughter was 10, and her allowance was 50 bucks. That's not true anymore. And I'd like to see that we could have something, you know, that keeps up with the times for both colleges, and for, that the college presidents not be evaluated by whether or not they hit this arbitrary target. Also, I'd like to note that in 1999, you set it at 2 percent of the unrestricted general fund. Somewhere between 99 and now, it went to 2.4 percent, and I don't know if the board took action to raise it to 2.4 percent. I don't know how that happened.
Trustee Melchiker.
I agree with that also, in that this was an arbitrary figure that was determined in 1999, which is a number of years ago, and I just have to point out that, as one of our academic, as academic senate president Gabriella mentioned, both colleges, Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College, are both well within the 50 percent law. So, it's not the colleges that are taking us out of the 50 percent law, and so, I wouldn't penalize the colleges in any way because of the 50 percent law. I think we always have to keep that in mind. And I'd like to know how that figure was changed also.
Very good. That item is here for information. I'm not sure that, but he's ready to respond to you at this point, Trustee Melchiker, and given the lateness of the hour, I'm going to move on to Item 7.2, which is an information item here that I expect will be coming back for approval once we have final data, setting the fees for non-resident tuition and out-of-state students. Any questions, comments on this item? If not, let's move on to 7.3. That is the, a list of potential board discussion topics for 2008, and Trustee Wagner, I'll call on you.
Well, it's a little late, but just a couple of thoughts regarding this potential list. Item number one, development of new academic and career technical programs. I'm not entirely sure that's an appropriate role for the board, to develop academic and career technical programs. You know, we can encourage them, we can facilitate them, we can request information about them, but I, the word development struck me as wrong. And Item Three, implementation of accreditation recommendations. Again, the word implementation strikes me as incorrect here, perhaps consideration of academic recommendations and potential responses there too, or something along those lines. But, I would rather not send any sort of message that we will be necessarily implementing anything until at least we read and see what comes out of it. And then, finally, Number Four and Number Eight, Basic Skills Initiatives. I have no idea what that is, or how the board has a role in that. Maybe it would be worth hearing, but, you know, I've always thought the basic skills problem is one of the students coming to us, and it's something that needs to be addressed at lower levels. And then, you know, and again, Number Eight, just some questions. But, anyway, so I think the list still needs some work, but those are my initial comments, and a good start.
Yeah, the only comment that I would offer is that some of these are general topics that really aren't there for specific board action, but really for discussion in terms of how the college community is dealing with these issues. So, that's just something to bear in mind. Trustee Fuentes.
I would like to see some work done on this before we give it any kind of indication of support, so I'd like to table this matter for one month.
Actually, it's here for information, Trustee Fuentes.
I realize it's here for information, but I would like to table it and have it come back a month from now, when some more work effort can go into it, and then, if we accept it as an item on the agenda, it would show our support for it. I don't want to accept it as it is presented to us today.
Not here for acceptance, but the motion to table is non-debatable. It's been seconded, so let's vote on the motion to table.
Okay, the motion to table is approved with two no votes from Trustee Patberg and myself, but that passes, and so, we'll move on to 7.4. 7.4 is our Basic Aid Information Report, here again for information. Any questions? If not, then we'll move on to 7.5, which is our Facilities Plan Status Report. Items that have changed are highlighted on that report. Any questions or comments on this report? If not, we'll move to 7.6, which is our Quarterly Financial Status Report, here for information. Again, seeing no questions or comments, we'll move to 7.7. 7.7 is our Quarterly Investment Report, here for information. 7.8 is the next information report, that is, the List of Board Requested Reports. The only thing that I would comment on, on that one, is it looks like we've actually, since we've, it shows the dates requested, all those reports have already been submitted. Not sure why we're continuing to carry this report.
The reason for that is because we were asked by the board at one point to keep providing a running list of the status of board requested reports, and whether they have been provided.
Okay. All right, very good. Well, I would, I would offer that, once we've already addressed the report, if we have no open reports, we can probably eliminate this item. I'll offer that up for future consideration. There's, we will accept the written reports as submitted. There was one late agenda item that came to us, which was 9.1, which was the Revised Saddleback College American West Model United Nations Conference, here for approval, and that is to send up to 15 students and an advisor on November 16th through November 22nd to Las Vegas, at a cost not to exceed $7,650. Is there a motion for approval?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any questions regarding 9.1? Seeing none, let's vote on this item. That item is approved unanimously. And seeing as the time is 9:58, I hereby declare this meeting adjourned.